There a minute, appears we have a quorum.
Katie, you all set to record? Katie, you all set to record? Okay.
Record, Peter, but your connection is static. I'm not sure if there's something you can do about it.
Muted? Is that better?
Not really.
Wow.
Maybe.
Is that better?
Perhaps good enough. Let's give it a shot.
Wow, that's strange. Okay. Good evening. My name is Peter Bassman, Chairman of Branford's Inland Wetland Commission. I'll now open the Commission's regular monthly meeting. It is January 9th, 2025. This evening's meeting will be conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software conferencing platform, being held in accordance with Connecticut's Public Act 22-3. Documents referenced this evening are available at the Town Hall or via the agency's webpage. The final agenda for this evening was filed on January 7th and is posted on the town's website. Does staff have any changes to the agenda as presented?
No.
Now I'd like to address a few administrative details before commencing this evening's meeting. First, to provide public exposure to the meeting, VCTV will be recording and broadcasting tonight's meeting. We're thankful certainly for their participation, and the public can do the recording on the appropriate cable TV channel in town. As participants in the evening's proceeding, please be conscious of positioning your camera so your face is visible on the recording, especially when speaking. Second, to ensure an accurate and complete record of discussions, each time a statement or comment is made during tonight's meeting, the party speaking must announce his or her name before articulating any comments. This applies to any party wishing to participate. You can use the raise your hand feature to indicate that desire, and the Inland Wetland staff will help monitor those wishing to speak. Third, once the meeting is begun, please mute your microphones. If you are not speaking, this will prevent the unwanted feedback during the conversations. Just to speak, just unmute the microphone. Finally, a couple procedural matters that were discussed within the wetland staff. First, if a meeting participant needs to leave the meeting, please indicate such need so that the record act reflects who was present during the proceeding when issues were being addressed. Second, if a commissioner needs to recuse himself or herself during a portion of the meeting, please blank your screens so there is no confusion as to who participated in the discussion on that agenda item. I'll now take a roll call for this evening's meeting. And let's see. I got a message that says ask host to start AI companion.
I would ignore that, but you do have a lot of static, Peter. Do you have the meeting open somewhere else as well, or is it just on the one device?
It's on the one device, as far as I know.
Maybe try muting this device and calling in for the audio. I don't know if the commission wants to give a quick break so that he can try that.
This is Commissioner Gold. I think it's a good idea. Static is really pervasive every time you talk.
Okay.
And I also don't have any video for you, or Jamie. There you are.
All right, I'll log out and try. Well, no, I'll mute the audio and I'll call in. Jamie, that's the 646 number?
This is Commissioner Gokowski. We hear you, Peter.
Is that better or not?
It's way better.
Yeah, I don't know what changed, but it's a lot better.
Maybe putting on the video, yeah. Okay, I'll now do the roll call as I was planning to do. Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, and I would also like to let the record reflect that I did have the opportunity to review the December 12th video, 2024, so I'm prepared to discuss anything to do with the public hearing and any matters that were relating to last month's meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, present.
Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, present.
Let's see, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Director and Enforcement Officer?
Present. Did you call Commissioner Papitone's? I missed that.
Now, why am I not seeing her on my screen?
Commissioner Papitone, I'm here.
Okay. And Katie Blanchett in the Wetland Associate?
Present.
Okay, the, we do have a quorum. Per our regulations, seven commissioners may vote on an issue. Is there any commissioner that feels that he or she must recuse themselves for any portion of this evening's meeting?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Armrod. I will be recusing myself from, let's see, Agenda Items 2A and 3A, really all the matters dealing with the Beacon Hill Road application and enforcement action.
Thank you. And hopefully, when you blank your screen, I won't be calling on you, Commissioner Armrod, as I have done in the past. I have the approval of minutes next, November 14th, the regular meeting minutes, which were revised. There were a couple comments on those minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes as revised?
Commissioner Armrod, I'll make a motion to approve the revised November 14th, 2024 meeting minutes.
This is Commissioner Begum, and I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Any nays? Next up, December 12th, 2024, the regular meeting minutes.
Commissioner Armrod, I'll make a motion to approve the December 12th, 2024 meeting minutes.
This is Commissioner Begum, and I'll second.
Again, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Any nays? All right, first up on the agenda is public hearing inland wetland 240902. 1, 2, 3, up to 17, Beacon Hill Road and Beacon Hill Road as an age-restricted housing development.
Chairman Bassman, Commissioner Begum, may I make a statement before we start?
This would be a good opportunity to do that, I guess. Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Begum. As people may or may not know, I am part of the Board of the Friends of the Farm River and Estuary. I'm the secretary. And I have been very clear with the organization that I cannot discuss anything regarding Beacon Hill with any of them, for that matter, any of the public outside of a public hearing. So I feel I can be objective about the application in question and look at its merit as to what's presented in our meetings.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Timothy Lee, on behalf of the applicant, in light of the fact that we received a letter from the Friends of the Farm River Estuary opposing this application, I would respectfully request that Commissioner Begum not sit for this application and recuse herself.
This is Commissioner Boda. Attorney Lee, I think Commissioner Begum just clarified that she has not partaken in ex parte communications. And a person can certainly be part of a group and not involved in a decision-making around this. She does not receive monetary compensation from them, and as such, it is appropriate. I do not agree with you that there is a reason she should have to recuse herself.
Okay. For the record, she's a board member of an organization that has taken a position against the application and submitted a letter against the application. I think under those circumstances, the prudent, it does create the appearance of impropriety, and I think the best practice would be to recuse herself. I certainly will leave her to her choices.
And to that matter, we have discussed the issue with Town Council, and we feel comfortable that with the statement that Commissioner Begum has made this evening, that she can remain impartial and do her duty as a commissioner for this commission. So we're going to proceed. On September 26th, the regular meeting of Branford Inland Wetland Commission.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, sorry, just before we move on real quick. Just to clarify for the record, Commissioner Begum, can you just clarify whether you are unbiased and not predetermined on the applications?
This is Commissioner Begum. I am unbiased, and I don't have any predetermination on this application.
And you've not been part of any conversations with the organization regarding this application or property?
This is Commissioner Begum. No, I haven't.
Okay, on September 26th, the regular meeting of Branford Inland Wetland Commission, the commission voted to open a public hearing on the application as it was determined that the proposal planned a disturbance of the wetlands on site in excess of 5,000 square feet. Date of November 14th, '24 was established to open the public hearing. CLA engineers was engaged in October to assist the commission in the review of the application. At that 11:14 meeting, the commission agreed to continue the public hearing until December 12th. Discussion was not concluded at the December meeting, so parties agreed to continue the public hearing to this evening. My introductory comments at the November meeting are applicable to this evening as well. Commissioners are seated for this application and are required to be fair and independent, not predisposed to any outcome. Commission must decide the merit of the application from the facts as they appear on the record, from their own personal observation and technical expertise, and from the expertise of outside consultation hired to assist the commission in assessing the application. Permit decisions must be concluded within timeframes specified by the Connecticut statutes and our regulations. Since we last met about a month ago, would staff please review the timeframes we need to be conscious of as we proceed this evening?
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, the public hearing must be closed this evening unless there's a consent to an extension. And then after the public hearing is closed, the commission has 35 days to deliberate on the application.
All right, so my hope that we can close the public hearing this evening. While there was some information provided between the December 12th meeting and this evening, I don't know that anything was added that would hopefully extend the conversation beyond this evening, and maybe we can even start deliberations this evening. Staff, wish any additional comments at this point? Regarding the information received?
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, I think I would hand it over to the applicant to present, unless you have any questions.
All righty. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Good evening again, everybody. For the record, my name is Timothy Lee. I represent the applicant, Beacon Hill Properties, with respect to the application before you this evening. As the commission may recall, we were before you at the December 12th meeting. We had basically presented our application in full at that point in time, and the commission had requested that the meeting be continued to tonight in order to allow CLA Engineering, the consulting engineers from the town, review some information that had been submitted shortly prior to the meeting that they did not have time to review prior to the December 12th meeting. We did receive a copy of the comment letter from CLA Engineering dated January 3rd. That is part of your record. The majority of comments from CLA indicate that we have adequately addressed those concerns. However, we did decide to supplement our presentation with and respond directly to the CLA letter with comment letters from Giuliano Associates. So as part of the record, Zach Jordina had submitted a letter dated January 8th of 2024 in which she responds to comments in the CLA letter. We had also submitted a letter dated January 9th from Rema Ecological, in which, once again, they report or respond to the CLA comments, to the extent comments were even, that responses were even necessary to those comments. In addition to that, Doug Anderson, who is one of the proposed developers, had submitted some additional information to the commission. One of the things he had shown, just for visual purposes, was an overlay of the current plan, the 22-unit age-restricted development, with the prior subdivision that had been approved by the commission in order to demonstrate that the impacts proposed by this application are substantially similar to the subdivision application that had been previously approved by the commission. In fact, it's our position that this current application has a less impact than the previously approved application, especially in light of the fact that we are proposing wetlands mitigation and remediation as part of this application, and that was not proposed as part of the subdivision application. In addition, we are proposing a connection to the sanitary sewer systems with a significant financial contribution from the developer of which we discussed in great detail last month. Once again, the subdivision application did not include a tie into the sewer system. It relied upon septic systems for the individual lots. So based on that, we think that this application meets the standards in the regulations. We believe that we request that the commission approve the application. I do have our development team on the line. Doug Anderson is here, Zach Jordina from Giuliano is here, and George Logan from Rema Ecological is here. I'll ask Zach if there's anything he wants to say to supplement what was in his comment letter that he submitted to the commission a couple days ago.
Zach Georgina, Giuliano Associates, project engineer, just more or less the only thing to really supplement is what was submitted in that revised drawing set that went out just before the, my office's holiday shutdown, I believe, was on the 20th of January. And it was essentially fixing a couple of the clerical and writing, rendering issues that we had talked about at the last meeting. I updated the zoning table. There was, I changed the font on the wetland flags to be more legible. I adjusted the contour labels so that everything's facing the correct direction, so there's no confusion over 86s or 98s. There was a call out that needed correcting that Jamie had pointed out, and there was a rendering issue on one of the calculation tables. We fixed that, so it displays correctly. Other than that, it's identical to the plan that we were discussing previously. Tim, you're still muted, but.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you for that. In addition, George Logan's here. George did submit his supplemental report. George, is there anything you want to emphasize in your report for the commission?
Certainly. Just very, very quickly, this is George Logan for the record. A little report came out today. It's basically a letter that's basically pointed out some of the things that we had agreed to do the last time around. I was asked to put in our notes that we would have topsoil that's going to be put for these areas that were putting the aquatic plants in the perimeter of the enhancement area that we discussed. That the topsoil that's going to be removed from the area of phragmides is going to be treated in its own stockpile covered with black plastic, basically led to cook so that those propagules desiccate. And thirdly, that it appeared to me that this was an opportunity for me to include in the planting table 12 additional button bush, which is perfect for this kind of enhancement that we're proposing. And other than that, I think one of the things that might have still been out there as a question mark is how we were going to, what kind of equipment we would use for doing the enhancement. And the discussion today with Mr. Doug Anderson, he reminded me that there are excavators that have a long reach of about 60 feet horizontally. And so that would mean that we could use such a machinery to excavate that area with phragmides and create that aquatic habitat without entering that area. So that's all I would have to contribute at this point.
Thank you, George. And then lastly, Doug Anderson, who was the project, one of the project developers is on the site. Doug did submit, as I mentioned, a supplemental diagram that shows an overlay of the approved subdivision as compared to this application so that the commission can judge the impacts from the prior application to this application. Doug, do you want to discuss that or bring that up? I think you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, Jamie, if you wouldn't, could you bring up the original subdivision over just the existing conditions exhibit? I think that was the 58 or 57. 50, 58. Basically, what we have done here is we have added the additional wetland that had expanded from the northern wetland and overlaid the existing approved 10-lot subdivision and chose the locations of the two homes that are proposed on parcel lot four and lot five, along with the grading that's proposed and the drainage that's proposed in that area, with grading more or less right up to the original northern wetland boundary line there. So obviously comparing that to our proposed plan, if you wouldn't mind bringing up exhibit 57? We took that a step further and we overlaid the, our proposed plan on top of the proposed subdivision plan that articulates where that building number four, the two-unit building, that is of a concern there. So I think what you can see there is when you compare that, that, you know, our, and given the amount of wetland creation that we are proposing, and I did not show that on this particular plan, but on our overall approved site plan, the creation of all that wetland that would not exist in the 10-lot subdivision plan, we would hope you guys would see that this is a, you know, a better, a more prudent option than, you know, the approved plan by adding wetlands, restoring wetlands on that northern boundary and bringing the, you know, bringing the grading further inbound than what is approved. So I just wanted to make those points with respect to that and answer any additional questions with respect to the prudent and alternative development scenarios relating to the financing. We did also get some updates on the sewer expense from the town engineer gone, and that cost has gone up a little bit in addition to what we had initially figured, but still within the parameters of how we have, you know, proposed this project at 22. proposed this project at 22 units. So be happy to answer any questions with respect to this part of it or anything else, obviously.
And Doug, just to amplify what you said, you did receive correspondence from the town engineer, John Hofferly, that the cost of the connect sewer connection is roughly $2.6 million, and it would be approximately $42,000 per unit to hook up. So there are 22 units. We're talking about almost a million dollars that is going to be contributed by this particular applicant as part of that sewer connection.
Correct, yes. But you know, essentially the catalyst, if you will, to be for the town to help defer that sewer cost, you know, over. In this case, that estimate is for the, also for the second phase of the Penn Road portion. So along with our 22 units, the first phase along Rose Hill of about 20 homes, 22 homes, the Penn Road portion also picks up another 20, 20 homes. So I think we're talking about 66 homes that will be part of this sewer, you know, improvement project plus whatever else is out there for land and so forth. And that was approximately $42,000 per unit.
This is Commissioner Bass. Just for clarity and understanding purposes, before we got into the sewer discussion, the shaded area between building four, or I should say north of building four, you're saying that's the extended wetland area that this new plan considers?
Yeah, so that, that's the, that's the wetland area that expanded from the original approval when the previous developer had gone in there and removed the foundation and building that more or less bordered that northern wetland and left the remnants of that area, created a kind of a lower, a further depression, you know, lower depression there. So the fact that this project has sat for so many years, that, you know, through the rain events, that, that, that area became saturated with, you know, obviously uphill flow to more or less take that excavated, removed foundation area and, you know, qualify it as wetland by soil characteristics, obviously. So and obviously George can opine in on that as far as the, the level of function of that wetland compared to other wetlands. But that is the area that, the darker shaded area is the expanded wetland that we determined from the last public hearing when we went back out with the consulting engineers, soil scientist, and George, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, our entire development team is available for any questions that the commission may have. If you have questions for the engineer or the soil scientist or Doug or myself, we're all available to help answer any questions.
I see that Logan has his hand raised. Did you want to add something to that, Mr. Logan?
Yeah, since George Logan is the record Rema Ecological, since we're sitting here looking at this plan, which shows this hatched area, I guess the statement that I will make to make so that it's clear, at least in my mind, that the impact to the delineated wetlands and then these that were created with the passage of time, as was just mentioned, in my professional opinion, the symptom is de minimis, given also the pre-existing disturbance here in this area resulting in very limited functions and values. And this wetland really doesn't contribute, this hatch there doesn't contribute to wetland functions and values to the northern wetland. And now in view of the proposed mitigation, which is going to result in wetlands with much higher functions and values, and this is not only an extent in functions and values. Of course, we've achieved the two-to-one ratio. So again, in my professional opinion, the disturbance here that's shown is de minimis.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bass. I see a hand raised. I'm not sure that the applicant has finished their material, but can you indicate the nature of why the hand raised from, is it Nisha? Maybe just a mistake. Mr. Lee, is that conclude your piece of the puzzle here?
That includes our presentation. Certainly, we reserve the right to rebut any public comment that we may hear right now. And as I mentioned, if the commission has any questions, we're happy to try to answer those questions.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I can appreciate the fact that you're still saying that you're, you're trying to get this under the approval of the previous application that was approved some time ago. The regulations have changed quite considerably since that original housing development has been put forth for the town. And that housing development is still, in fact, approved. And I've stated in other meetings during this whole course that we should not hear anything about the previous application. We have to take all the considerations on the current application that's before us and not mention the old application as far as overlays or anything. We don't, we can't consider that previous application for this application. So any further comment regarding those, that application, I would appreciate that you and the, you know, the people that are involved in this project not mention it anymore because it has no bearing on our decision.
Thank you. With all due respect, Commissioner Goklowski, I disagree with that proposition. And I do remember having the same discussion at the November, October, November meeting. And I do think that the prior subdivision application, which is approved and still valid, is a valid, feasible and prudent alternative. So it does come within the purview of the commission to consider it. As a matter of fact, my recollection from this same discussion at the prior meeting was that town staff had requested that we submit the prior subdivision application as a feasible and, or show the prior subdivision application as a feasible and prudent alternative to this proposal. So I do think it is certainly appropriate fodder for this commission to consider, and I think it is a feasible and prudent alternative to this application. And quite frankly, as I mentioned before, I think this application is an improvement over the subdivision application from the wetlands perspective because we are proposing wetlands mitigation and creation, which was not part of the prior subdivision application. We're also proposing a connection to a brand-new sanitary sewer system, which would eliminate the 12 septic systems that would be associated with single-family houses in that area.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, let me just clarify a little bit from my vantage point. So I did have a conversation with the applicant about prudent and feasible alternative analysis and the fact that the subdivision approval that was issued, or I'll say 2009, whether the permit was issued in 2009 or 2010, I'm not sure, that that approval on paper had less direct wetland impact. And so that should be presented in the prudent and feasible alternative analysis as to why it wouldn't be prudent and feasible alternative with less direct, less impact to wetlands and watercourses. I also just want to mention that it did have some mitigation. It was different mitigation, and the amount of mitigation was, of course, different than this application, but it did have some proposed mitigation to offset the impacts that were proposed as part of that project.
This is Commissioner Goklowski again. From what I understand, that you are agreeing to hook up the sewer systems for the other, hook up sewers to the town for the additional houses in the area to eliminate their septic systems at this time?
Not exactly. If I understood the question, as part of this subdivision, we are helping to contribute to the infrastructure that, that will be used, that those other lots can tie into the sewer system.
So you're not, you're not going to contribute to them tying into the sewer system? So there'll be, there'll be, you said your cost was in the neighborhood of $40,000 a hookup. Is that correct?
A little bit more, yes.
Okay, so those, those, those neighbors would have to come up with $40,000 to tie into the town sewer system?
Well, that'll be up to the sewer commission to determine how the sewer commission wants to allocate those, that hookup to those other units. All I'm saying is that part of this application, we are the impetus to have the town bring the sewer system there, and we are contributing financially by virtue of this application to that happening. Without this, without this application, there's not the impetus from the town's perspective to bring the sewer connection to that area of town.
But you're also bringing the sewer system to that part of town because I don't think the property itself would sustain their own septic systems based on my walking of that property.
But well, I'm not sure what you mean by that because we do have.
You're proposing a 22-unit condominium project, and with that, with that, with that proposal, you're, you have to put in 22 separate septic systems or a major septic system on the property to treat the waste that's coming in there. And, you know, and that's, I don't, I walk the property and I don't see where that property would sustain itself, a septic system in any way, shape or form. I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the things is that that's not before this commission because we're not, as part of this application, we're not proposing a septic system for this unit. We're proposing a connection to the sanitary sewer system. In the prior application, subdivision application, we were approving septic systems for the individual houses. That was approved by, by the health department. So and also, I know you were not here last time you did review the minutes. We did present testimony from George Logan, who was our soil scientist, who talked about the benefit, the impact that nitrogen levels can have on the wetlands and watercourses and that the connection to the sewer system would be an improvement.
I reviewed the entire video of last month's perform, last month's meeting. I would not be sitting here right now talking about it if I did not review it. So and I do remember George Logan's comments regarding that particular system, particular area. My concern is, another concern that I had was, was the proposed, this is going to be a condominium association, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so my question is, has there been formal association, membership, you know, the bylaws and everything created for this particulars condo association yet?
No, that, that is not, you don't create those documents at the inception of a project. You create those documents at the end of the project. So if we were to get approval from this commission, we would ultimately go to planning and zoning. We'd have to get planning and zoning approval for the change to the right, the amendment to the regulation. And then we'd have to submit a development application to planning and zoning. If all those things get approved and we're allowed to proceed with the project, we would then create a homeowners association or a condominium association for the unit owners.
Yeah, because my concern is the catch spaces and things like that, the clean out, we have no way on who is going to be responsible for the maintenance of those when we approve this particular application because I can't foresee what's going to happen in the future. And since we don't have that information in front of us at this time, it's kind of a catch-22 situation.
Yeah, I think what's generally happens in those circumstances.
Do you mind if I jump in for just a moment? Commissioner Goklowski, we've had a, we've come across similar, not, not the same, but similar, well, applications with similar issues with homeowner associations. We talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. And so I think that that is certainly an important conversation, and it's important to document. And were we to move to approval, it would need to be a condition of approval that in the creation of the resale documents and the, the, I can't think of the name of it right now, but essentially how the property is run, that that information is passed on, including the stormwater management. So essentially, this isn't the first application that had a homeowners association that, that needed to be part of our consideration, deliberation and conditions for approval. It, I don't believe at this time it would be reasonable or appropriate for an applicant to have those documents, that level of document. It's just that's putting the cart well before the course, although we certainly need to plan for it.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, I'll just also note that we do have a document in the app. Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, could you just hear what I was saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it was weird. Said I was muted, but everyone was looking at me. Okay, so we do have a general stormwater maintenance document that provides some direction on the record, and that could be expanded upon. I know it was also touched based on the maintenance of the wetland mitigation areas and, you know, if there's anything else significant, like if the commission thought like, like touching on integrated pest management or something like that, or pesticide management or something like that was important, it could potentially be grouped in with that. Of course, that should be stated on the record if that's something you're looking for.
This is Commissioner Begamon. If I have several questions for George Logan. And this, some of these questions come from recently reviewing the Connecticut deep course for commissioners. So sorry if I didn't think about them earlier, but one of them has to do with wildlife. And in your, in your report, you state that both the north and the south wetlands, there's a Y in the chart for that they support wildlife habitat. And in your report, you talk about the plants, but you don't mention any animals. And it, when I look through it at least. So I'm wondering what kind of wildlife are using those wetlands? What kind of amphibians do you think are in them? I'm thinking about when the 12 to 18 inches of soil is taking out, taken out and put somewhere to dry out. You know, what's happening to the wildlife in that? I know before you said it was likely invertebrates, but how do we know that they're not amphibians there? Those are a couple of questions to start.
All right, so discussion of wildlife is very interesting to me because I started my career, and if you look around my room here, if I turn the camera, you'll see pictures of wildlife that I've taken or have collected. I'm a wildlife biologist by training. And so I started my career by evaluating wildlife within wetlands and reporting them as part of reports like this. And lo and behold, as time went by, I discovered that the wetlands commissions do not regulate wildlife. You regulate the physical impacts to the habit that the wildlife might use. So that's kind of a little aside here. So what could use these wetlands? Again, I didn't do a wildlife inventory. If it was the purview, like in Massachusetts, you kind of have to do that, not in Connecticut. So the question comes down to what would happen to wildlife that might reside, say, in wetland one, which we're excavating that phragmides area? Other potential for wildlife there? Of course, and I said macroinvertebrates for sure. Now, there might be some amphibians. I'm more than happy to say that it's probably green frogs, probably toads, probably, you know, great tree frogs. I think it's things that are sort of disturbance tolerant. This, this is not a Verna pool, so I don't expect any of those species, those obligates. So one would have to carefully do the work. And that's why in one of my little box that you see in my implementation notes, I very, very much underline and emphasize the fact that someone like myself, I'm not telling myself to do that, but someone that has my similar credentials to me would have to be there during the implementation of the mitigation plan. And those are the kinds of things we look at. So as we're beginning the work and we see that some wildlife can't get out of the way, and we see that some wildlife can't get out of the way, most often, especially amphibians, you probably know this, and and reptiles also are very sensitive to vibrations. And so as soon as they, they hear the vibrations of the excavation material, equipment, they will start moving away from that area, but that doesn't mean they all will. So it would be one of those things where we have to be aware of the fact that there could be some wildlife that we need to stop the work and get out of the way or or give them time to get out of the way, but they will get out of the way. Some of them will hole in, yes, I understand that. So there's always a little bit of a potential for taking. But we try to limit that to the extent possible by having someone like myself at that time. And it's happened. I've had situations with mitigation work, especially not these kinds of habitats where turtles, we had to stop and basically move turtles away. And that has happened before. So yeah, I expect that that is something that we we would be aware and have to deal with during the time of implementation.
And this is Commissioner Bagamun. Thanks. And given the topography of this whole area, we've got the Beacon Hill, which is really high. You've got Rose Hill, which is higher. So basically the development is happening across a across a valley. And it seems to be that this, this, this area of freshwater is one of the few freshwater sources in the Beacon Hill area. Just from having my own experience of walking up, it's a ridge, water runs down both sides. And on the east side, it goes into this wetland area. And on the other side, not sure where it goes because it's so steep. And then there's brackish water or, you know, the estuary. So can you speak just to how any wildlife, whether it's birds or deer or will be affected in the development phase? And how that can be mitigated?
All right. So the idea is we, we don't know exactly again, because wildlife inventories are really not usually part of a of of wetlands application anymore. They used to be a long time ago. So the idea is that, yeah, we we realize that as habitat changes, the complex of habitats are changing. We we have development. But then we're creating some other areas that are going to be a little more attractive to certain wildlife than others. We are planting a lot of things. So the more tolerant cosmopolitan species, and we don't dislike cosmopolitan species, right? Ones that are more tolerant of suburbia, say. They will come in, for instance. The area that we're doing, the wetland enhancement area where we're creating now a semi-permitted flooded habitat. Well, if there's an area that's going to allow for breeding of amphibians long term, that will be, that will be it. Other areas below the detention basin, which we're going to have more of an aquatic habitat, same thing. We have expansive areas. Yes, we do have development surrounding. But the detention basin area is going to attract a lot of avian species because they they're going to like that kind of habitat. And they're not particularly disturbed with, well, I see them from my backyard, what I have here. Species that you would think that they shouldn't be in suburbia, but they're there because they have these little conclaves, these little areas where they can isolate themselves, you know, detention basin and other areas where they, you know, they now don't have a direct visual disturbance, say. So I I expect that a lot of wildlife will still utilize this area, especially since you also have beacon beacon hills next door. And that's an area where wildlife is more wildlife happening there. I'm sure there's deer population. I'm sure there's passive species like coyotes and foxes. I wouldn't be surprised. I believe I did see some scat from from red fox when I was out there. So these species will acclimate to the environment that we have. And we have a lot of native plantings and native habitats that are going to either be remain or be enhanced. So yeah, there's going to be obviously a change in the wildlife assemblage, but some things are going to be more like I think of more amphibians more likely utilize this area over time as they, as they come in and they breed and they disperse. So yeah, development has impacts on wildlife. There's no doubt about it.
So this is Commissioner Bagamun again.
Can I ask a follow-up question for your first question before you go to another topic? This is Commissioner Bodah. So Mr. Logan, you, you were talking about in your report, the notation that someone with your expertise, whether that's you or the, or someone else, should be overseeing the project and particularly the the mitigation area. Is the, just a logistical question, is that a recommendation within like the descriptive process of what should happen through this application? Or is that a statement of what will happen in the application?
It will happen because the notes are going, are on the plans. They will be revised because, like we said, we're going to be adding a couple of things. But here's what it says, note in a big box and shaded. All wetland replication and work shall be supervised by an ecologist or wetland scientists, including initial grading, planting, marking invasives in adjacent upland areas, buff areas, and marking any native materials for salvage or retention, which is always something that I look for. In a pre-implementation meeting shall take place at least one month prior to planning limitation between the wetland scientist, the site contractor and the landscaper and the town's wetland agent at the town's discretion. So that's prominent there. That's on the plans. That's will be part of a permit.
Would you kindly just reference, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of files. Can you kindly just reference for me what?
Jamie, can you help? There it is.
Thank you. What exhibit number is that?
In the Welling agent, it's exhibit thirty-three B. There were revisions to this document so that the entirety of the document is split up into two parts, thirty-two, thirty three A, I believe, is the tables and thirty-three B is more of the narrative portion. We have historically had problems with this not occurring. That's not to, you know, hold against any particular applicant. However, I think there are some there's potentially some learning to be had there. It is common on a project like this to have a bond to cover the implementation of the mitigation. And I, I think looking at making sure that the entirety of the mitigation creation is essentially bonded would help ensure that it's done the way that it's described it will be done. And the regulations do allow for a mix of cash and surety. Erosion controls has to be cash. There's room for surety for other things. So it shouldn't be overly burdensome on the applicant, but still keep them engaged in making sure that it's being done the right way.
And 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 just to that same, this is Commissioner Bodah, in that same vein, I think again, it may say this in some of the exhibits somewhere, but I think that this wetland replication note, it talks about a pre-implementation meeting one month prior, but that it would also need to have we should identify and maybe, Mr. Logan, you can identify a reasonable number or a practical number for for frequency during this. How long does this? Would this process take roughly?
All right. That all depends on when the start happens for this work. Sometimes it all happens all at once, but more often than not, it happens in two different phases, an initial phase of of grading, stabilization, initial stabilization, and then planting, depending on what time of the year it is, because we're not going to plant certain species in the middle of the summer. So we might wait for the fall to do some and then spring is another period. And and the reason for this, Ms. Bodah, for me emphasizing this particular little thing that you see here is, is my thirty-six years of experience when this didn't happen. So somewhere about fifteen to twenty years ago, I realized that I needed to emphasize, yes, this is part of the construction documents, but sometimes people ignore them. So I kept emphasizing this, emphasized it at commissions. And it's, it's for my benefit too, because of the reputation that I have of this kind of work. It's also to the benefit of of the resources and the project and the town. So that's why that is so prominently displayed in the notes that are part of the construction documents. So again, when is this going to happen? It depends on when our start will be. And I think we've discussed that as part of the phasing, when some of this work is going to happen.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Bodah, would it be reasonable then that at the time of that pre-meeting that a a rough timeframe be scoped out enabling there to be reports submitted to town staff at periodic intervals through the process? Is that a reasonable addition?
Very much so reasonable. And that's something that I would expect that I would do. Because again, this doesn't happen in in a week. Sometimes it's, you know, you have a lot of activity during the week, then there's a little bit of a pause, then there's more. So if you read on in the notes, that you'll see that for the first year, the year of implementation is a lot more coming back to the site to to make sure that it's has taken the right trajectory as far as what we planned. So the first year, and I don't, again, I could bring the notes up again, I believe that if you go to let's see. Initial follow-up and maintenance. Under four, there's some language there. And then the monitoring. Year one, twice during each of the four next growing seasons. And again.
This is Commissioner Bodah. I, I think that it's not so much the monitoring after that I'm thinking about. It's it is the, the in progress while the work, because that's, excuse me for cutting you off, but I like that, that is always part of our standard conditions of approval. But I think sometimes it's this initiation and then the the steps between initiation and completion to now where we're at the monitoring stage where things have gone, not according to what our understanding of the plan was.
Understood, understood. And and I'd be more than happy at that implementation meeting to spread out, you know, do a chart sheet if we, if we need to, say, okay, this is what's happening in the next four months, you know, growing season. And then even when we're doing something at the site that has to do with the wealth of mitigation to be a a weekly touch with staff and saying, this past week we did C. Next week, we're planning to do the next three things, whatever. So I'm more than happy to do that. Whatever, again, I would do this on my own because I I have to follow this through. But if it would give the commission a little more confidence, we certainly would involve the staff on a weekly basis.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagamun, for letting me jump in.
Okay, Commissioner Bagamun, just, is there any from, for Mr. Logan? Also for timing wise, we're talking about planting, but what about animals? Is there any timing that should be avoided for that digging up of sixteen to eighteen inches of soil, for instance? I mean.
Well, that's a good question. So if I had my druthers, of all things considered, other things not, you know, not being an issue. I would do the excavation of that area in July or August. Less of a chance to disturb wildlife at that time. Or if you want to do it in the dead of winter, that's fine too. Yeah, but that would be, I mean, you, you've seen the D E P. When, when we're looking at listed species, for instance, like spotted turtles. They like us to do the activities during the off-season. So November to March. So that's, that's one possibility. Of course, we can't stabilize areas in the winter with vegetation. We'd have to do temporary things. So again, the best time to avoid would be, and and honestly, I would I would suggest that, that if at all possible, that portion of where we're in the wetland for that enhancement be done in July or August. We will, we will be dealing with a lot less water. And so it will be a lot easier to do. And of course, also be a side benefit to less wildlife disturbance.
And Commissioner Bagamun again. Knowing that, knowing these type of soils and this area where this creation is going to take place, what, in your experience, if things are done right, what is the success rate for the creation of the wetlands? And as, as Commissioner Bodah said in our last meeting, we're coming off a, a development where a creation of inland wetlands did not go well. So.
You're a little shell shocked. Yeah, I get it. In my experience, I've had some big misses over the years. And it was because I was not involved step by step in the implementation of a wealth of mitigation plan. Or in a couple of cases, my, my client went bankrupt. So that was the end of that, unfortunately. Interestingly enough, the one I'm thinking of, we did enough so that it, it's still there. And actually, I saw it yesterday, which was interesting. This isn't self-evident. So if I follow step by step, I would say that the chance of this going well is more than nine percent. If I'm not involved step by step, again, things can happen.
Okay, this is Commissioner Bagamun again, if I can keep asking the questions. And you know, one of those, we have the northern wetlands, I mean, let me rephrase this. We have the northern wetlands, which are in a sense going to be dammed up. We don't like damming things according to deep. And then there's going to be a very long culvert underground to get to the other side to the detention basin. And in, in one of the overlays that just came in, five, maybe it's fifty-seven, maybe it's forty-seven, um, it showed that that development of the ten houses had a swale right where the finger of the new, the newly found wetlands is. And they have other swales around the property. But but and they had that swale we're building for is, which at least would reduce a pipe. And I'm just you know, i- i- if this had been never disturbed, it would probably have been a little, since it's a valley, it probably would have been a little stream going from north to south all the way. It's been disturbed. And so you have these kind of two separate wetlands, but water flows downhill. So the water is going somewhere, maybe underground. But it seems to me that that this development would be more friendly to inland wetlands if that connection between the top and the bottom, the north and the south, was much shorter either through uses of swales or a, a culvert that's under the road that can be daylighted, et cetera. I don't know if that's a question for you or for the, the engineers.
Well, I can, I can take a crack at it first, I guess, and the engineer can tell me that I'm nuts. But anyhow, so under existing conditions, I get it. You know, you don't have houses between wetland one and wetland two. What you have is an expanse in this valley, which is not particularly very good habitat. It's been disturbed, as you know, it has invasive species. And there's no direct, there's no water course coming from one to the other. The water overflows, goes over pavement, goes into, you know, other areas, then back in pavement, and gets all the way through the bottom. So ecologically, from a hydrological perspective, these two wetlands are not really that well connected. They're obviously connected, but not that well connected. So I think the, the wetlands that are to the south, which is wetland, wetland two, the portion of the wetland two that's in the preserved area and then off-site, uh, is in itself an own ecological unit, and then wetland one, uh, is its own ecological unit. And so that's probably what's gonna persist. Are we severing a little bit of an ecological connectivity? Yes, but I don't think it's, it's significant because of how these wetlands operate within themselves.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But, this is Commissioner Begaman. Can the, can the engineers talk to about perhaps shortening that connection? For the overflow? Or is it just considered unnecessary?
Uh, Zach George and Giuliano Associates, um, project engineer for this. Um, i- in a perfect world where money was no object, obviously bridges are the best way because you can, animals will pass underneath them. They're incredibly financially restrictive. In terms of, uh, functionality, if the soil, our soil scientists and, um, from, from an ecological standpoint, feels that they're two separate wetlands with minimal animal interaction, it's not beneficial from a cost or stormwater standpoint. Uh, the functionality of the swale in the, uh, two thousand and nine design is, I think, more of a function of wanting to save money on pipe versus any actual benefit to the, uh, to, to the actual environment itself. Um, with this design having to create utilities passing through, I have to be able to drop that culvert considerably to allow for uh, sanitary and water and all of that to pass above this culvert. So part of the reason of having this length is I need to be able to get it at the road low enough, uh, at a reasonable slope to pass underneath everything and daylight on the backside. So there are design elements that dictate, you know, cause all, 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 all pipes are rise over run, so to get that slope. So if I need to get, drop something lower, I need more length to get that way, get there, or I need to increase the slope. And with a fi- higher slope, you're gonna get a faster velo- exit velocity, and that's gonna lend yourself to a higher erosional potential on the back end.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Back to Mr. Logan. Um, obviously, there's a substantial wetland mitigation area that this plan discusses. And we know that, uh, through the years, mitigation efforts have had, you know, certainly a checkered past. Um, two things, obviously, very material in terms of the success or lack thereof, uh, would be the plan itself and then the execution. And as mentioned at the last meeting, we've had a recent example of a mitigation area of somewhat, uh, large tract, um, where it looked like there was probably failures on both sides. Plan, uh, the plan itself, which it turned out, uh, the, the wetland didn't behave as the plan had, uh, thought it would. And the execution in terms of the plant survivability, et cetera, was also compromised. Why should this commission, um, uh, take comfort, um, in the plan that's proposed? And as well on the execution, since I guess it's my understanding, we don't know who would be doing the, uh, the actual work in, in the wetland. Um, so I, I've got a, I, I've got both sides of the equation here that I need a little more, um, uh, impetus of confidence, uh, to suggest that this uh, five thousand plus, uh, tract of, of wetland that's being disturbed is going to uh, be better than it is today.
And so those are all legitimate questions, and there's, I can say with, I can tell you that you're right, that the wetland mitigation has a checkered past. Um, I've had a few fails myself, as I mentioned, so that can center the record. But also had some very good successes over the years. I've learned things, and that has sort of guided me in what I recommend, uh, as far as what we do for implementation, as far as grading, as far as having, for instance, as I've said in, in the, uh, in the plans and the mitigation notes, the ability to make small changes. Um, I can tell you that, hey, if you look at the mitigation that's been done, not by myself also, but also many, many others, the, the major problem is creating wetlands that are wetter than we want. Surprisingly. Um, so I've learned from that. I've learned what kind of things, when to do certain plantings, when to not do certain, what, what to promote, what, how to stabilize, all these elements. You know, I have thirty-six years of experience. I've learned a thing or two, I guess, over the years, I hope. So, um, again, if, if I'm involved, if some of my experience is involved, um, and we keep, we do all the steps, and we don't have a, you know, Mother Nature throwing us any curveballs that we can't correct, then I would tell you that we have more than a ninety percent confidence that this is gonna be successful to the end of the monitoring period and then beyond. You know, if we can make it to the end of the monitoring period, the five years, then I can assure you that I can give you several examples of things that I've done, uh, that have gone back and looked at and go, hmm, it worked. Maybe not a hundred percent to what I wanted, but it's a wetland, there's wildlife, there's native vegetation, limited invasives, hydrology looks good, connectivity, all those things. So that's kind of what we're, we're, it, it's part of, it's a science and it's an art too, right?
Yeah.
All, all those are understood.
But I, I guess part of, uh, part of the concern is, uh, we don't know how deep your involvement is going to be going forward.
Well,
This is Commissioner Boda. I, as Mr. Logan was, was talking, you know, as a commission, it is not our place to, um, say this person or that person, but I, I'm wondering, Jamie, if we might include a condition that not just requires someone with the appropriate qualifications, but um, rather someone not only with the appropriate qualifications, but with a track record of successfully creating, um, mitigation areas. Uh, and, you know, we can expand on that a little bit, but I think it's not just about someone's qualification on paper, but their actual track record of doing this work successfully. So Jamie, what is, what do you think about that?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I certainly think that that's something that we could look to expand upon in the language. Um, and I think Mr. Logan said earlier, one of the key things he's noticed in the success of projects he's worked on is his level of involvement. And I think that's one of the things the commission perhaps would wanna look at trying to, um, also make sure that that big box that we were looking at earlier, that he said was so important, that that's actually implemented, because, you know, projects, time is money. Sometimes, you know, and we can't say, we can't judge, you know, who's gonna do what or anything like that, but I think, you know, whatever we can put in, whatever the commission can consider to help make sure that that is properly implement, implemented in compliance with the, you know, approval, should an approval be granted, um, is, is certainly key. Um, cause I think from my vantage point in permit compliance follow-up, that has certainly been a huge part in whether or not a project has been successful, is whether the soil scientist was involved, or I go out there, see, they did the work, they never contacted me, they never contacted the soil scientists, and then we're scrambling backwards, all the earthwork's been done, there's no bond in place to make sure the earthwork was done properly. Um, I think those kind of boxes would be good to make sure we're lined up, um, to help ensure the project, uh, is as successful as it can be based on the proposed plan.
Yeah, Jamie, uh, maybe this is a Jamie question, maybe this is a, um, a Doug Anderson question, I'm not sure. Those initial meetings, um, prior to the start of construction, is there, um, at that point, a determination of rough benchmark dates of we will have, we believe, uh, you know, since we're starting now, we'll be at this point by this date, and therefore would send a report so that, um, both the developer and town staff are sort of aware of rough dates to be checking in with each other.
Doug Anderson, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jamie. Go first.
Sorry. Um, so I'll just say real quick, um, yes, there's usually a timeline that's mentioned at the beginning, and it almost never is adhered to, because not anything against the developer or their, their practices, just you never quite know what you're gonna experience on site. Um, I would say, I do think it would be good to have a regular check-in. I think this is the kind of project where the commission generally would be looking for routine sediment and erosion control updates, and that could certainly include, you know, a standard site update, um, and kind of check in on where things are. Not that it would necessarily come from the erosion control professional, but it, it could be a, kind of a piggyback system of, um, notifications.
Yeah, I think, this is Commissioner Boda, I, I think that, that I, I certainly understand it's, it's field work, and so, um, there, there has to be a lot of flexibility with, with dates. And I also think that, um, as we look at when, when, what might be the thing that is a, you know, a month before that the, um, the mitigation work such that, um, a staff meeting would need to happen, that, that those dates are roughly on your, um, calendar or, or in your, um, awareness, so that if we're not, um, so that we don't miss it, like you said, where all of a sudden a whole lot of work is done and there hasn't been an interaction. So I'm just wondering what kind of mechanisms might, um, better protect both us, um, and ensuring that the application, any application is um, implemented as planned. And two, from the developer perspective, because, um, you don't wanna end up in a situation that, I'm sure you don't wanna end up in a situation where you have to stop all construction. Um, or now have the bond pulled or anything like that, because people just didn't follow the plan.
Uh, yeah, so if it's okay, I, I can jump in here. So, you know, in, in construction, you know, generally you have specifications and design criteria that you follow. Um, not unlike building a structure or a building, you know, we, we have, uh, requirements to, to build that way. So the way I would look at this wetland, and it, and it all starts with the communication, right, from, from day one. So, you know, we're, we're always very communicative in our developments with all the, you know, related parties, engineering, public works, obviously Jamie and Wetlands, I talk to all the time, and, you know, when we have a project that, that's active here. But, I mean, the way I would look at it from a pure common sense perspective, George, George has created a set of documents uh, and, and a proposal of how to create this wetlands and mitigate some of this wetland. So we wouldn't do anything but rely on George to guide us when we do that through, you know, proper soils, proper plantings, things of that nature. So we would follow the, you know, the, uh, just like building a structure, we would be building this wetland. And to do so, you have the, you know, you have the plans to follow. And I granted, there's variables, times of the year, things of that nature, but I think if you, if you have a communicative relationship with the town and Jamie and, and the agency, you know, you can, this can be much easier and simpler and, and more productive and probably more successful w- working through the dynamics of creating something like this. And it's no different than having a building inspector come into a structure and, you know, inspect the frame, inspect the electrical, whatever, whatever it may be, to make sure it's up to code and compliant with today's standards and, and requirements. So I, I wouldn't see that, why this wetland creation wouldn't be any different, right? Maybe it doesn't follow the same procedures as the, the building code, but there's some level of common sense and practicality is if you have a plan, you follow the plan. And that's historically what I've been doing for thirty years. So there wouldn't be any reason for us not to use George. There wouldn't be any reason not, not to have pre, pre-inspection meetings, you know, weekly updates, whatever it may be. Design on the fly issues, hey, Jamie, call up Jamie, hey, we got an issue here, this isn't working out, we'd like to redo this. And have that communication, that's how you create success in any type of project. So, you know, I understand everybody has to worry about doom and gloom because of past history or bad scenarios, but obviously, there's gotta be some faith in the, in the, and intent, you know, with the people you're working with, the plan that you're proposing, which, you know, goes back to this, the whole dynamics from day one of how we got here, uh, you know, with this project. It was not just some off the cuff, let's go with this. This was, this was a lot of communication and dialogue with all the parties in town to get to where we are today, to what we thought was create a project that was gonna be accepted, understood, better than what's approved now, clearly better than the site conditions that exist now with, you know, remnants of old foundations and parking lots with, you know, wetlands connecting between wetlands over pay- asphalt and pavement, invasive species. How can it not be better, right, than what we have today? So that's all I can tell you as far as that goes, but my experience in construction and, and history in construction is that you do the job, you do it right, and you do it as, as it's proposed. So that's how we would approach it.
This is Commissioner Basserman. The existing condition and in improvement over that is kind of a low bar. Uh, when we actually look at what's there today versus what the plan shows. Um, so let, let's hope that we're not just looking to do better than what we've got.
Well, it's, it's our opinion that we, you know, we're, 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 we're trying to find that balance, right? Creating better wetlands, creating a, a project and a product that is in need for, for people in, in town and, and that wanna live in Branford. So, you know, we have to, we have to kind of walk that, that fine line between, you know, keeping everybody kind of content and happy with, with the dynamics. And we, you know, again, thought we had done that and brought in professionals to try and go the extra mile and, and create a, you know, granted, you know, construction is invasive, we understand that, but it's, it's a short-term, you know, a short-term pain for a longer-term gain. And, you know, to take an existing site the way it is now and with an approval that's, in my opinion, less environmentally conscious than this project is, uh, you know, we thought we were, you know, we think we are putting, you know, a better product and better project forward.
Mr. Logan, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Um, can I share my screen? Jamie is
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, um, let me do this. Okay, where am I going?
Assuming you're sharing an exhibit.
Oh, here, here we go. All right, so, uh, a couple of things. Can you see this? Wait a minute, this. Oops. So this is a, um, Google Earth photograph. And, you know, if, if I knew that you would have liked to see a whole bunch of my success stories, if you will, I would have, um, been happy to do that. Um, this is an area in Farmington, and you can certainly, your staff can talk to the town and Um, this is an area in Farmington and you can certainly, your staff can talk to the town and they'll tell you what we've done and haven't done. So this is an area where some disturbances can happen. Some wetlands are going to be disturbed. As you can see, there's already some activity there and um, let's see if I can, I apologize. I have, uh, this is in the way. Okay, here we go. So again, this was the pre-existing condition. And they said you got to create a wetland for the disturbances and actually restore some wetlands too. So this is what was happening at the site and and so mitigation is required. And you can see what we've done. So this is the area that I we created next to an existing wetland, which is right here. And this is an area that was restored, which had inadvertently been disturbed. Um, and this is from two thousand and twenty-three. This is from two thousand and twenty-four. We're still uh in the process of of looking at it. So that's one thing I wanted to share. Um, so this is an example. Uh, I forget how big this area is, probably three quarters of an acre or something like that, altogether between these two areas. And yeah, we we had wildlife here, including turtles uh coming off from the pond. And let's see if I can share one more thing. So if I stop this and try to share again, one one more thing and then I'll I'll stop. Where is it? Okay, so. And here's, and I have several of these. I'm just showing you ones of work that I've done. This is the one in um in a self-field that I kind of looked at yesterday. Now, this was the field and obviously this is, there's invernapools to the side. Uh, this is the middle of nowhere, actually. Uh, so this shows you what what we did for excavation. We're doing the plantings here. This is uh the end of the first season. So immediately it popped. So I would expect something similar here. Uh, and again, if you keep that that nice green area in your mind and know that we've reached there because we've taken certain steps and we continue to monitor for the next four years after implementation. Um, the only difference now with this, because this is the the project that my um my uh client went belly up. And it's still functioning. It has a little more cattail than I'd like to, but it's still a native species. And it's attracting a lot of amphibian activity. So I wish I had had the opportunity to give you some of these stories. And and I have a dozen or so that I could have shared them. Here we are.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Uh, to that point, um, let's go to the other side of the equation, the the failures. Is is, in your experience, is there a common thread uh that you've seen with the different um mitigation applications as to why uh a area that uh was disturbed um didn't go according to plan?
Yeah, I would say hydrology is not the issue because, as I said, most people go make it things too wet initially. I would say the number one is not following step by step. But another one is invasive species control. That's major. Invasive species control. So if you if you're not on top of of going after your invasive species for those four years, making sure that the vegetation you want there is proliferating and excluding other things. Um, then you can have a problem. Um, Japanese knowweed is one big problem that we we've seen and some of these mitigation areas were not my own, thankfully, but actually, I have one that I'm chasing right now, but it's it's very uh manageable in uh in Enfield. But other folks have let invasive species control a stagger. So they might have done a year one and forgot about it two years, two or three, and then they're chasing their tail years four or five. So yeah, that's a major one.
Thank you. This is. Other questions from the commission?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Goklowski. I'm just, I'm curious. Um, from start to finish on this project, um, let's say we gave you an approval tonight. Start to finish, what is gonna, what is the timeline? And I'm sure you have a timeline for completion. Or how how long would it take you to do the construction and everything? Can you give us an idea how long you have anticipated this?
I uh Doug Anderson again for the record. So, you know, typically, uh typically the build construction process of a of a of a unit or a structure might be eight to ten months uh timeframe. Obviously, things happen concurrently. You're also, you know, uh market is a factor there as far as absorption and how many units, but I would say a project like this, by the time you start, you know, you have a a pretty substantial amount of time to get the site to grade and and be able to start a building. Utilities and things of that nature, structures up, uh enough work and pavement done to be, you know, to be able to have a certificate of occupancy issued. You know, I'm I'm going to say for a project of this size, um, probably from the day you start to the day it ends, three to three and a half years uh is is my my guess, you know, for the last unit sold, punch lists, as-built, things of that nature. Um, probably is a realistic timeframe. I mean, can it be done quicker? Sure, it could be done quicker. Um, it's really a function of the market and and, you know, how quick the units sell. It is a for-sale product, so it's not a build and rent where you typically would, you know, probably shorten that timeline by a year, year and a half or so.
So they're not, they're they're not planning to, they're going to be doing this in phases. I'm I'm under, this is the impression that you're giving us?
Yeah, so ba- basically, you know, as a a developer that building this out and marketing this, we, you know, we want to, we want to build a building in an area that's going to be, you know, uh, less disruptive for the first occupants that move in. So and and most likely, we would build a building as a as a model park to have, you know, multiple units for people to 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 show. So in looking at that, the way we're initially looking at that uh Building Three would probably be considered our model park and we would build that um initially, um and then move into Buildings One and Two. Uh, and then Building Four and then Five, Six, and work our way up into the project. So um, and as far as the site work goes, Zach sort of explained that, but more or less, the initial site work will entail the, you know, the building uh one, two, three and four area, getting that to grade, getting that, getting the utilities and infrastructure into that. And once that, once that's underway, then the uh the second major phase, which would build the buildings, you know, of Five, Six and and Seven, um, you know, would be the second half of that. And that's where, you know, the earthwork will happen and it, there's crossover, so that work will occur. The early part of that work will occur while um, the, you know, the Buildings One through Four are being constructed. Um, because obviously they take time to build and you really can't start a building until you put, like, you know, the 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 road system in and the utilities and so forth. So um, that's kind of how we would envision that, but it's it's that one through four initially to be built out and occupied. And then the Five through Seven to to kind of clean up the rest of the project.
Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, just to clarify, it sounded like you said you would start with Building Three, which isn't until Phase Four. Um, so would it be correct to assume at that point that you would be doing all of the grading, utility, roadway, driveway type work per these phases, but that you might not actually construct Buildings One and Two until it's until after you're constructing Building Three or?
Yeah, I think I think like, again, when you when you talk about the phasing of the the site work, because the site is very compact and tight, there, you know, the way Zach has articulated is is exactly how we would do it. However, those phases would would happen kind of in independently of of the building construction, because at the end of the day, we really need to get Buildings One and Two, that grade excavated to subgrade. And in doing so, building, the building uh Three and Four area, that obviously comes up to grade, creation of the the detention base and start to figure out the the, you know, the wetland connectivity and how we're gonna make those, you know, those connections and how we're going to start to create those those areas uh of restoration um that I would foresee, you know, kind of happening uh prior to even like those buil- Building Four um and and built, you know, um going up and so forth. So, but again, that's again, when you get out in the field, you you kind of work with the dynamics there of, okay, how, you know, space, things of that nature. Trying not to go back and have to rework areas. So when you work an area, you work it and you work your way out and into the next area and and so forth. So the the project is bifurcated pretty good to to be able to do that. So um, with respect to the building aspect of it, um, you know, that would be sort of happening after the, a number of the phases of the site work have been completed or done. If that makes.
So the site work would be constructed per the phases, but you might be going back and building the buildings later?
Uh, into, correct, into the phases that were already completed site work wise, but you know, the whole key would be not to go in there and, you know, we need to work that area, that that first area to get the grading and get the cuts and fills and the, you know, get the site balanced and and to subgrade and grade and utilities and so forth. So that kind of quadrant of, you know, Buildings One, Two, Four, Three and the detention basin, that's all your initial. Most of that work is done before you're really putting foundations in.
So would your intent be to seed, say you don't build Buildings One and Two during Phase, what is this, Phase Three? Would you seed? Oh, that's right. Would you seed that area or do something to stabilize that area while you're moving on to other?
Yeah, so I I would say that, you know, in um how we would ideally like to do that is, I mean, we'll obviously pre-sale, pre-sell units. Now, if, now if we, let's just say we have more demand than than uh we need and we may not even build a model park if there's enough people that we would just build out. So we would start with Building One, One, Two, Three, Four, and then out, out, out the door that way. So um you know, any areas that would be opened up, we can, we could clearly, we would clearly stabilize, you know, and obviously you know, water containment, soil and erosion controls, things of that nature, but um, as far as like, like seeding an area where a building would go, um, I would, I would only say if that wasn't going to happen for, you know, six months or something like that. If if that area is going to be opened up and 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 um instruction started, that's going to all be kind of managed through the 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 normal S and E, you know, process and and um you know, work that goes on. When you look at the site, it's really not that big of a site. It's pretty compact in those areas. So um, I think managing that part of it is is uh um, it's, you know, so it's a lighter lift than if it was a larger, you know, multi-multi-acre, you know, site and multi-acre, you know, opening up multi- multiple acres of of land.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Any other questions from the commissioner's staff?
This is Commissioner Begamon, and I don't think we've uh when we talk about prudent and feasible feasible alternatives, I know one time I talked about moving a driveway or the road for One and Two behind and it, the reason not to do it was given that the neighbors would see the headlights of the cars. And then that got me to looking at the cuts and fills and the slopes that are being created and I started looking in detail and there are a lot of retaining walls in this project that we haven't talked about. And I know it's eight, whatever it is, eight forty-one right now. Um, but it seems to me, when you look at that ten-house unit development and you look at this one, that this development has a lot more cutting and filling and creating of steep slope than the ten-house unit one. And I understand that the each individual of the houses is a smaller block than this, but um, you know, for instance, in the northeast, you you see that contour that what would have been with not much, not that much slope, and then you see the contour coming from that northeast con- corner going down steeply to the back of those houses. Um, and no, and no, no swales, no, no talking.
Are you, are you talking about Building One or Building Two? Is that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, so that, those, that obviously slopes up to those houses, right? So that, those buildings sit. So we, I I'll go back to your point. We initially had looked at putting those buildings flip-flopping, putting them, you know, putting the driveway like we talked about. So there were two factors there, right? Obviously, there's the headlights and the driveway factor of of the backyards of those particular houses, but it also, it also created a flip side of a walkout dynamic for those buildings that would have have lawn and yard adjacent to that um eastern boundary of that northern wetland. So in flipping that and and doing that in the configuration we have here now, there's no retaining walls per se on 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 the western side of that driveway where those grades all tie into the existing grade. So we've kind of worked our way up that hill with a, with a, you know, typical engineered sloped driveway and by utilizing tho- those grades and tying those grades into the roadway, eliminating any kind of car or disturbance and and creating a a a a greater amount of undisturbed area between the edge of the roadway and the wetland, where in the reverse, if it was flipped, that would end up being lawn or yard that would back up to to that, to that area. So and in doing so, you, working from that side, from that western side, we've worked our way back into the hill. So those units work their way into the grade and that grade slopes up on the northern property and it obviously slopes up on the eastern property. So and and the plan there is obviously to landscape that and create buffer and so forth. So as far as creating runoff or excessive uh, you know, water infiltration into that area, that's completely the opposite of of what we're showing here. So um, I'm not sure that component of of your dialogue was accurate. The other component up on the upper area, Five, Six and Seven, yeah, so so we also looked at that in in a different way. If you, if you want to look at that ten-lot subdivision, you can see the homes that were originally proposed were pushed right up against the Beacon Hill Preserve line. So one of the things that was important for for me in looking at it is to preserve that buffer between the the pro- the project and Beacon Hill. So if you compare the location of the the ten, you know, the homes in the ten-lot subdivision in that area, um, those homes press right up against that line. And one of my goals was with the Zach and the engineer was to maintain that buffer and try and keep a fifty-foot vegetated buffer between there. And what that has done is caused us to lower those buildings and create more of a retaining wall, so we don't have to disturb west into the Beacon Hill property. And we can tuck those buildings into the, to the the slope and the grade and also lower that road so we can minimize the, you know, the slope back down to the southern wetland and, you know, minimize the cut and fill on that on the wetland side, utilizing the retaining walls along the back of Building Five, Six and Seven, which we feel we could do in a, in a, in a manner that's going to be aesthetically pleasing. It it, they can be planted. Um, and we've left some area uh up at the top where that could be re-vegetated and go back to, you know, you know, original vegetation. So that's the whole theory behind this plan and the uh compared to the the original subdivision plan, while trying to utilize the same infrastructure, road system, detention basin, encroachments and things of that nature. So that's the, that's kind of our position and and our take on how we are presenting this plan.
So this is Commissioner Begamon. So the eight-foot retaining walls, which are on behind Five, Six and Seven, um, maybe we can talk about them at some point. They may be straight vertical up. I don't know. What, what, what I was talking about in terms of the northeast section was the very far corner where it goes from a hundred and eighteen feet or so down to uh to that cut, right where Jamie's cursor just went. Um there was a much more gradual slope and now it's going to be a much steeper slope in that corner and on that whole side to the right of building one. And it just seems to me like there could be some design elements. I mean, if that is regulation, we, we can approve.
Yeah, again, so our, so this is, you know, you're playing, you're playing, you ha- you, we're working with the grades. We could have brought that grade up, made that cut less, but that would require a fill on the, on the western side towards the, the northern wetland. So uh uh we felt a prudent way to do that and it also brought the buildings down, got them out of the backyard of the, of of, you know, the the house at Long Rose Hill. And then able to plant that with trees, you know, a different species that will re-vegetate that and that slope will now become uh, you know, a vegetated uh slope that will kind of marry into the existing grade. But Zach, maybe you can opine in a little bit better on that.
Yeah, uh Zach, Georgia and Giuliano Associates, I just, I want to make something abundantly clear. Branford does not allow for traditional steep slopes. An engineered slope that is considered stable is a two-to-one slope essentially for every uh two foot horizontal for every one foot of climb. Branford requires a three-to-one slope, which is even more gradual. It's considered a mowable slope in terms of being able to run equipment on it. It's not a steep slope. It's very much a manageable slope. Uh in terms of this, the, the, and I, I know you've got a smart eye or a keen eye there. You, you picked up on that there's a retaining wall there that is underneath a three foot. I believe it is a two and a half foot essentially. It's a, it's just to to allow for that sidewalk. Um it's not necess- I mean, not necessarily. It's not even a uh so retaining wall that require a permit in Branford. Uh in terms of the eight-foot retaining walls on the back uh on the other side, I know that those were brought up. Uh those are compliant, those are the, uh we're, Branford limits the retaining walls too. Um most likely when, when we're back there, um we'll probably be hitting at that level of cut um trap rock or ledge, in which case Branford allows a five, um going five foot vertical for one foot horizontal, um is considered a um safe and stable rock face in Branford. Um that we may interact with that, in which case that would most likely be a default that would end up going for a more natural appeal. Uh but from a regulatory standpoint, that retaining wall is conforming with zoning regulations and is outside the up and review area. Uh I know that because of the size of this, we're looking at everything here, uh but that does meet zoning requirements on both e- elements. Um by essentially having this retaining wall, um fill-wise, if you look at the contours on our feed and feasible alternative, which is the um still uh op- you know, the the existing approval for the subdivision, uh their land bridge was significantly higher than ours. I believe it's close to four feet taller. Um what we're trying to do is a more uh less, cr- creating a, a less um fill that we're building up and obviously which would have a resulting spread uh with Branford now requiring those three-to-one slopes. So what this entire, what we're trying to do here is 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 maintaining what was, and I know that um some commissioners don't want to hear, but maintaining the the existing approval and coming up with um a more um not only economically feasible, but less e- environmentally uh impactful design. Um one thing Doug did not mention uh in terms of environmental concern with the driveways. I know, you know, everyone thinks of putting a road um next to a wetland, you're going to be getting contaminants from. Uh but a lawn that's allowed to drain towards a wetland, you're going to be getting that straight um uh nitrate coming off the lawn, any fertilizers, pesticides of that. By having a curbed road, stormwater hitting that road is literally going to be directed into the, contained by the roadway uh into the catch basin system through treatment and into the stormwater detention rather than having that lawn flow off towards any wetlands. Um so that was an additional designs element from my office when looking at this was by having that road there, um we're not, not having that lawn interaction being allowed to go into the northern wetland or the southern wetland for that matter, um and minimizing it to really only building three in any uh lawned area um beyond the pickleball court and such that is currently in that uh field brush. And some of it's actually lawn being maintained by some of our neighbors currently um as we get up closer to the right, the road in right away.
This is Commissioner Begamon, I have more, more questions.
Yep.
Does anyone other commissioner have a question before I ask? Because?
I have just one um quick question, I think. Um can you just, uh Mr. Georgia, can you remind me um the where the current sewer system ends? The length that's being proposed to be added in this? And how many houses beyond the application would be eligible to hook up?
That, I'm, don't have that answer for you. I, I was not expecting uh to be reviewing the plans uh that the sewer department had already um gone through uh with with a length to this property from where it currently ends.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can help out there a little bit, so.
And I don't need an exact number like to the foot. I'm just curious as a, as a general um roughly, how, how long are you adding and then approximately how many houses would be eligible beyond this um application?
So the, the, the sewer, the la- the sewer manhole, the last sewer manhole on Rose Hill ends up at the intersection of uh Pinsky Drive and Rose Hill Road. And the, the, so the plan, the the town design plan calls for a gravity line um to uh start just, just to the south of that, to come down Rose Hill Road uh to pick up all the Rose Hill Road residents, basically to where Rose Hill Road and and Pent Road interact. So that run along Rose Hill Road will pick up uh approximately twenty, twenty homes uh for that section. Um and then obviously if our project came into the mix, that would act, that would be twenty-two more, so forty-four ho- forty-four uh connections, if you will, that flow down to a town-owned municipal design pump system um that has a horse main that goes back up Rose Hill Road, past the, where the sewer ends, up into the, the existing manhole there. And um that's the quote-unquote phase one of the, the, the project. The second phase uh con- continues from a gravity point up Pent Hill Road almost to Bourbon Drive and that picks up another uh twenty homes. So uh at ho- ho- homes that exist and then there's some land there and so forth. Um so that's a total, I think it's uh sixty, sixty-two uh homes. And then there's a, a potential third phase that will go from the, the current manhole down to Pinsky Drive, because the, the houses on Pinsky Drive are also on Septic. That will a- eventually end up in the Lakeview Plaza and essentially steward that whole part of town. Or I think there's another ten or twelve on Pinsky Drive.
Where's P- uh where's Pinsky on this map?
Uh.
I see it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Begamon.
I think you're back up.
Um were, were sidewalks ever discussed? And, and also for a prudent and and feasible alternative to a impervious pickleball court, has anything like shuffleboard, pervious or bocce? I know you have to have some sort of either passive or active recreation for the over fifty-five planned community, but um I'm, I'm just, for the environment, wouldn't there be some other better alternatives? And our, if, if sidewalks are part, I don't know if sidewalks have to be included in a fifty-five and year, year older community, but I don't know if they were and would that increase the impervious services that we have been talking about?
Uh Zach, George and Giuliano Associates, uh I know at one point that uh internally we had discussed sidewalks. Um and yes, adding sidewalks would significantly increase the impervious surfaces well. Um that was a, a consideration that when discussing offering that um was a break the bank in terms of functionality of a stormwater uh containment. And as I don't believe it was required, that was something that with this being fairly low traffic fifty-five community, uh you're not going to be seeing a commuting hour of folks rushing out. Per se, you're going to be seeing, some folks probably will still be uh in- employed for a bit, but you would, you would see a uh much lo- lower um on individual road usage um ability or uh uh traffic volumes there. Not a traffic engineer, but that was discussions that were had was that. Um so to answer the sidewalk question, yes. I know at one point there was a discussion about a tennis court uh and the pickleball being a smaller uh footprint-wise was uh gone to, so again, fit in with the available space as well as uh the stormwater management element of it.
So, but this is clear, this is Commissioner Begamon. What kind of surface, the pickleball court, is it going to be impervious or pervious? I mean, you could, I'm just trying to make, trying to find all the things that we can do to reduce pervious.
So I ran, I, I, my analysis-wise, I assumed it was impervious. I'll, I'll be honest, I've never designed a pickleball court. I believe they come refab, I'm not sure what the surfaces are. I ju- I ran it worst case that it was impervious in terms of my design calculations.
And just um for clarification of the prudent and feasible alternative that was rejected, which was the two big buildings of fifty-four units. Given that this is, is my understanding, I want to make sure this is right, that this is R four, which means you're not supposed to have too dense a population and that even though financially fifty-four units would be okay, the developer thought that that density and that type of building wouldn't be acceptable by the town or something like that. And, and I want to ask Jamie of the commission, is that, is that how we decide? Um I, obviously you can't do, I think the fifty-five and older community can only be four units or something like that. There are these regulations. But um I want to make sure that we're thinking about that, those two buildings and, you know, because um the developer talked about that that would be financially possible, but that, I mean, to develop it with those two big buildings of fifty-four units, but it wouldn't pass zoning.
Uh th- this is Doug Anderson. And so again, uh yeah, back when we started the, this whole process uh in, in talking to the different, you know, agencies in town and and specifically the town planner at the time and kind of having, you know, uh a charrette of kind of a, an alternative development scheme for this property that would help with the density to help the economics of the sewer while not uh overburden the neighborhood with uh density and um and uh presence, if you will. So um through that maceration of discussions through, with zoning, we went informally to the commission, talked to them about some options. This one seemed to be the most appealing with, with, for them. Uh this, this one would, we would be uh falling under what's called the age-restricted housing regulation, seven point two, I think it is, um and fifty-five and older. Uh it was determined, you know, through all that dialogue and discussion with, with the different constituents in the town and also, you know, trying to think about the neighborhood, what's compatible with the neighborhood, um single-family, you know, low-density homes. Uh we found this to be, you know, like the most balanced development to be able to, again, kind of walk that, that line uh between uh and, and of compatibility, basically.
But we would require a zone change, as you mentioned, that the properties are for. In order to do the age-restricted housing, we would require a zone change application to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a discretionary act by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have discretion to approve it or not approve it. And based on the developers' preliminary discussions with the town staff and also the Planning and Zoning Commission, they were very unlikely to approve an application that consisted of two towers with that type of density because the Planning and Zoning Commission would find that it's not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. So the plan that ultimately the developer landed on was something that they thought, based on their conversations with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the Planning and Zoning Commission would, would support uh and would allow a zone change to allow the application to proceed so that they can get some age-restricted housing in Branford.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, so I certainly think, you know, whether something is, is permissible in a zone speaks to its, whether it is um feasible to, to implement. Um whether or not the commission truly can the In the Wetland Commission can obviously only consider it relative to the impacts of wetlands and water courses. Of you, of course, the In the Wetland Commission is not going to determine whether or not it's ultimately comply with planning and zoning or acceptable or permissible, eh, you know, i- i- in line with the neighborhood. So I think listening to some of the logic being presented, it is in, in review and relying on that testimony is eh reasonable. Um and of course, if for whatever reason, planning and zoning were to deem um to not approve it for whatever reason or, or approve it revised, then any revisions would have to come back for a review by the In the Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. Um but I think that they've kind of acknowledged that or presented that uh that building, apartment-style building um and maybe the applicant can clarify, it would not generally be permissible under the existing regulations and you would need to be asking for, for more deviation from the standard regulations of the lot than for the approval that you're seeking.
Yeah, yeah, that, we would have to, we would have to use, I think, the, what your uh Plan Development District Regulation, which is a, an overlay uh, you know, um regulation, which I'm sure Tim can expand upon. But that um Harry had given us the indication that that wasn't necessarily a prudent uh zoning tool to be utilized on this particular piece of property, is, is kind of how he kind of phrased it.
But and not only that, Doug, didn't, you, you met informally with the Planning and Zoning Commission and you discussed various mech, uh different types of applications and different types of density.
Correct.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission indicated to you that, that they would not approve that type of density for the site because it was inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, I, they felt that this was a, a more, um in their opinion, prudent, you know, uh alternative development than the, than the single-family homes.
Other questions from the commission? Do we have members of the public that would like to uh make comment while we're still active in the public hearing?
If so, request you raise your hand so we can try and call on you in an orderly fashion. Looks like we have one hand raised, Perry Mariska.
I see two.
I'll let you call them out, Peter.
Yeah, uh Perry, why don't you uh take the floor?
Okay. All right, thank you. Perry Mariska, Economic and Business Development Manager for the town of Branford. Um I'll put my base on for the benefit, benefit of those that don't know me. Um as part of my activities, uh housing concerns within the town often get coupled with businesses' needs or concerns. Some way, somehow, people living in town have an effect on business, whether it be for employees of companies in town or as customers to patron businesses in town, housing is a factor. David Fink is a housing policy consultant with the State of Connecticut South Central Regional Council of Governments. He was the guest speaker at yesterday's Economic Development Commission meeting. One of his key points was the need for housing, be it apartments, single-family or affordable housing. His data shows that from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, home prices have risen sixty percent and twenty twenty-four is estimated an additional ten percent, if not more. The state of Connecticut saw an increase in population while all its neighboring states saw reductions, simple supply and demand. One point in particular was concerning the lack of available housing for the aging population that wishes to remain in the town in which they raise their families. Unfortunately, the dramatic increase in the cost of land has resulted in fewer and fewer developers building small residences. Branford is most definitely in that same position. I am constantly approached and contacted about residents' desires to find a suitable home to own that has a smaller footprint than their current home. With the advantages of no worries of cutting grass or with the advantages of no worries of cutting grass or shoveling snow and many other outside maintenance needs. As an age restricted development maintained as an association, this project addresses that need. This project cleans up property of a long abandoned chicken farm that left behind tons of gravel, tar, cement, treated and painted wood, and who knows what else. This project will clean up that site, rejuvenate the original wetlands, and create additional wetlands. This project is less intrusive and more environmentally friendly than the previously approved plan that can still be built. This project is far less intrusive than a project that could be approved through the eight thirty G statute. In addition, this project will be bringing sewer lines into an area that does not have them. Again, the already approved project was using, was using septic. This has got to be a plus for the inland wetlands that otherwise could be affected if the other project goes forward. Recently, a developer was proved on Goodsell Point Road, or development was proved on Goodsell Point Road. Part of that plan incorporated a brand new sewer line for all fifteen homes. The additional benefit was that the residents with long existing homes on that road along the Branford River had septic. They now have been able to tie into the town sewers, something that would have been a long time coming had it not been for the developer building those new homes. I wholeheartedly agree and understand the commission's concerns and desires to be sure that the development of the property is not abusive. My hope is that the body can realize the project's value to each of us within the town of Branford. I am confident that if the inland wetland water authority commissioners come up with reasonable guidelines and requirements, that the developer will abide by these and improve the area for all. Please, for the benefit of so many, find a way to make this project go forward. The possible alternatives are not a benefit to any, especially the wetlands. Thank you.
Mr. Mariska, this is Commissioner Boda. I have a follow-up question for you. Thank you for coming and sharing tonight. You mentioned that additional homes on Goodsell were able to connect to the sewer system that was added. I'm wondering if you can, if you know roughly what percentage of those homes, how long that process took once it was available to them. And while not part of, necessarily part of this application, I'm wondering, did the town support individual homeowners in offsetting the cost of those connections to their home?
So from my recollection, I do know that the town was extremely receptive in the, the developer doing that. And I think that there was actually some kind of reimbursement for the cost that, that would have, the town would have had, had they had to put them in themselves. I don't know the, the exact details, but I was at a water authority meeting when they, when, when that came up. So, so I do know that it's definitely something that the town is interested in, 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 I think, I don't know, and maybe Mr. Anderson or, or one of the others could, could answer that question better if they've had any discussions about the, the build of the sewers. But I, I would imagine the fact that since there's nothing there, that any, any of those people have the ability to, and many would, would jump on, on the, on the choice. I don't know how many, I think there's probably a half a dozen homes right in that section. There's also a mariner or two, I'm not sure who, what, or where, already had any kind of access or now has access that they didn't. But I do know that at least six of those homes down there did not.
Thank you.
Yeah, just aside, you know, the, the, the way, you know, obviously if this project moves forward, the dialogue that we've had with the, with the sewer commission and, and, and town engineers that they're going to look at this project and they're going to kind of look at the dynamics of the overall cost and compare those costs with how that would equate to, say, somebody replacing a, a septic system on their home. And, and from my understanding, they're going to try and find a balance between a number that would be commensurate with, you know, somebody having to replace their septic system that may or may not like work or fail again with a, you know, with a sewer connection. And, and the other thing the town offers as well is they do offer a deferred program. So if people do tie in to the sewer, they, you can sign on for that cost. You know, there's an interest cost with it, but you can pay that on an annual basis. And it's, I think it's amortized out over ten or fifteen years. So there is some ability for the town to, and to offer incentives for people to tie in without having to put the full capital cost upfront of the tie-in. And typically I've seen in the past, when, when the sewer lines are going in, the contractor that's awarded the contract also kind of gives proposals to homeowners to, you know, bring sewer lines to their house for the eventual connection at, at a discounted price, if you will. So there are kind of vehicles and mechanisms to entice, you know, the community to tie into the, to the sewer.
Mr. Anderson, this is Commissioner Boda, could you, those documents, would you be able to add them to the record, just so that we have them? Whether it was the sewer commission or where, where are those incentives or that program?
Yeah, there's a, I typically have, it's a document that the sewer, you sign with the sewer authority. It's like a lien on the property. So I'm sure I can find a blank document of that and, or, or talk to John about trying to get some more documentation on that.
Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, if that's being added to the record, I think we would need to hold the public hearing open. So that way everyone has a chance to see those, those documents and comment on them. I, I, I just, I don't know much about the process, but my understanding is that when there's proposed to be sewer availability, there's a public hearing in that all of these questions that have been coming up about connections are discussed on a project by project basis, if you will. So what happened in the past isn't necessarily what would happen. You know, with this potential project. So.
I just, this is Commissioner Boda, I just think, I mean, the, the applicant has, has stressed one of the primary benefits of this project is that not just the new homes, but up to sixty homes can move to sewer, city sewer. And Mr. Logan spent quite a bit of time talking about the benefits to not just the, the freshwater systems, but our estuary as well. And so I, I, you know, it's always been important to us to have that, anything that's sort of referred to in that way to be part of the record.
Agent understood, I just also want to make sure that, you know, if we're adding anything, that everyone has a chance to review it. This is certainly needs to be added before the public hearing is.
This is Commissioner Bagman. I had meant to ask earlier, and, and Mr. Mariska brought up this affordable and also the downsizing. And I forgot to ask, what is the size of these units, the square footage of the living space? And what is the market target for price?
So, yeah, we, I also added to the exhibit list. Let me see, that's.
Fifty-seven, I think.
Fifty-nine. Those are some renderings and floor plans of the, of, of the units that we, that we've kind of designed this project around. So it's more or less two types of units, there, there's a end unit and then there's middle units. And the, the units, there's, there's, there's some, there's some like, we have some sunrooms on the back which can or can't be put on if, if, say, somebody didn't want that. So the base unit is generally, generally around eighteen hundred square feet. And the middle unit's a little bit bigger, it's, I think, closer to two thousand square feet. They're all two bedroom, two and a half bath units. And each, there's, obviously there's a, you know, a three unit and a four unit building, which if you keep scrolling down there, you'll, you'll see those as well. So, you know, as far as anticipated unit sale price, that, you know, our whole goal in the beginning was to try and, you know, create a unit that fit that market that was, you know, affordable, which is kind of a hard, hard, hard number to get your arms around these days with the way construction costs are. So we, we haven't really defined a hard number at this point. But typically, you know, a, a product of this type needs to be commensurate with existing homes that a potential buyer would buy these units as far as value goes. So if, let's say somebody had a $400,000 home, ideally you'd, you'd like to keep your product around that same price or slightly less where a, a potential buyer can sell their home and laterally move into, you know, one of these units. Or in a better case scenario, you know, sell their home, put money in their pocket and move into one of these units. So, you know, as far as a final number yet, that'll somewhat be market driven. This is not a affordable project. And that was one of the, one of the things that we kind of steered away from an eight thirty-two G when, you know, looking at the higher density because of the typical, you know, contentious nature of those. So again, we tried to find a balance of something that's going to sell and be compatible with people that want to stay in town.
And Commissioner Bagman, is eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet typical? That seems large for a fifty-five and year old.
We, 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 we completed a project a couple of years ago in Orange, active adult community. And, and those units generally were closer to twenty, twenty-one hundred to twenty-three hundred square foot on average, some larger. But when you look at these floor plans, when we design a unit, we're, we're always cognizant of square footage because every square foot costs money. So what we try and do is get as, you know, tight, tight, tight a unit and home as we can square footage wise, but not sacrificing functional room dimensions and layout. So if you, if you look at those units, they are, you know, what I would consider functional, but not overly excessive sizes as far as square footage and dimensions. So what we found is in designing these units, trying to meet all those milestones and, and have a good functional unit that's livable and functional, specifically for somebody that's coming out of a larger home. You know, I would love to be fifteen hundred square feet just because it just is less money to build. But functionally, the, the unit layout and configuration is just, doesn't work as practically as, as where we are here.
Jamie Frederick in the wetland. We still have a public comment hand raised.
Yes. Jamie Flynn, you wish to speak?
I do, thank you. Given the late hour, I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. But good evening, my name is Jamie Flynn. I'm a board member and past president of the Friends of the Farm River and Estuary, or FREE, a five oh one C three community-based environmental group focused on preserving and protecting the farm river from its headwaters up in Wallingford to the estuary in Branford and East Haven. Yesterday, we submitted a set of written comments for the commission to consider. And as the, the primary author of those, I'm here tonight just to summarize them and to answer any questions the commissioners might have. So at the outset, just to respond quickly to the earlier characterization of our letter, just to be clear, we're not here to request that the commission reject the application, nor is our goal to create any unnecessary delay or undue burden for the developer or the commission. However, this is a relatively large project in an environmentally impaired watershed, and it's our prerogative and responsibility to make sure the, the commission is aware of our concerns. We became aware of the application the day before the commission's last meeting on December twelfth. And since then, you know, we've done our best to plot our way through the project documentation and the record from previous meetings and similar comments to you all in as timely a manner as, as possible. Moving on to those, those comments, our primary focus for, for those of you who might have had time to read the letter, I recognize that not everyone probably has, is on the potential impacts of the project on water quality in the estuary. And I recognize from, from this discussion that that's a, a complex issue. There are some, some potential negatives associated with the project and water quality, and also some potential positives. So, I mean, we want to, we want to acknowledge that. But as discussed at some length in our letter, we have many years of data collected by our group and others. There's currently sampling going on, I'm aware of, by the USGS, demonstrating that the estuary suffers from several severe and persistent water quality impairments, including very low dissolved oxygen, at times hypoxic levels, resulting in die-offs and things. High turbidity and excessive macrophyte growth, macrophyte being those, you can think of sort of large algae, those green sheets of seaweed that kind of cover the, cover the, cover the, the marshlands, especially at low tide. The worst levels that we've seen are at our sampling location, which is about one thousand feet north of Short Beach Road. You're at that bridge and face due north, go up about a thousand feet. And that's where we see some of the worst levels, particularly with respect to dissolved oxygen. You know, this is a direct result, as you know, from pollution from fertilizers, leaky septic systems and other sources. And as a consequence, the estuary has been ranked year after year among the most impaired impairments in the state. Indeed, it's designated as not supporting habitat for fish and other aquatic life and wildlife, both in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-two. And so this context, I just wanted to provide that, you know, this, this is the context in which our, our letter attempts to offer some specific comments and questions about the proposal based on our review of the documentation. And so I'll just briefly summarize those. First, you know, we do think that the standards in DEEP's twenty twenty-four Stormwater Quality Manual should apply to the project. I think our reading of the applicable language in the manual is that projects that haven't been permitted by October first of last year must comply with its requirements, including its, its focus on low impact development strategies. That said, I did see and do acknowledge an email in the file from DEEP engineer opining that because the preliminary design phase was completed prior to the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four effective date of the new manual. And coupled with the fact that the most recent application here was submitted to the commission on September eleventh, which was less than one year from the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three publication date of the manual, that therefore the, the old manual and not the updated manual applies. So I'm, I'm still not sure we agree with the reading of that operative language, but we do acknowledge that DEEP here is the permitting authority with respect to those issues and that they have stated that the old manual applies. Nevertheless, given the serious impairments that we see in the estuary, we, we think there's good reason why the design of the project should consider following those standards in the twenty twenty-four manual where it is feasible and prudent to do so. And in that regard, we do appreciate that the design of the detention basin, for example, appears to meet those requirements. And also that the developers made some other changes like using a sandy bottom for infiltration, as well as upgrading to an improved hydrodynamic separator. I think I saw that mentioned as well compared to the, the unit that was originally proposed. We are not experts in the design of these types of systems, but some of, some examples of low impact development strategies pulled, that we pulled from the new manual that kind of doubted us is at least worthy of being mentioned here as, as possibilities might include, you know, additional buffering from critical resources, reducing the amount of impervious, impervious service, whether that's by just reducing the surface areas or using pervious pavements and materials, minimizing grassy areas in favor of vegetation that may not need fertilizer, eliminating cul-de-sacs in favor of T-shaped turnarounds, use of green infrastructure like bio swales rather than an extensive network of catch basins, pre-treating or filtering stormwater to remove nitrogen. And in some cases, they suggest reusing stormwater as well for activities like watering vegetation. Again, we are not the experts and we're not necessarily advocating for any particular strategy to be incorporated into the design, but we did think the commission might benefit from some opinion, some further thought from the experts, including the developer, if, if appropriate, the peer reviewers of the town engineer or others, you know, perhaps commissioners with experience in these matters on whether it would be feasible and prudent to incorporate any of these or any other low impact development strategies into the project design. There's been a lot of discussion tonight, and I think in the previous meeting as well, about connecting. uh, this, the public sewer line, um, and the potential opportunities that might provide for other homeowners in the area to, uh, switch from their septic systems to, uh, to public sewer. Of course, we would absolutely support connecting the private homes on Rose Hill Road to the public sewer system. Um, it's just unclear to us at this stage, and I think we've, I think we heard a little bit more tonight that, um, that was helpful. Um, but, um, you know, at, at present, based on the information, the record, it was unclear to us, you know, whether any of these folks have expressed interest in connecting. And, um, and similarly, some of the questions that you all have, uh, asked tonight about, you know, whether the town might require connections, whether the town might be willing to, um, contribute some funding towards, um, making these connections happen. You know, all of that said though, um, if there is a realistic opportunity to get these homes transferred to public sewer, that would be a, a good thing. Um, so a few other thoughts here. We also asked in our comments whether it would be, uh, possible and prudent to impose some type of permanent restrictions, um, uh, in the conveyance documents on the types of nitrogen-based fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, road treatments, um, that could be used on the property in perpetuity. Um, the best strategy, uh, you know, might be to, to limit the total area covered by lawns and roads, but, um, there are some landscaping products out there, sometimes referred to as, uh, environmentally friendly fertilizers, for example, that might have reduced nitrogen levels or that are, uh, made with a coating to prevent, um, um, you know, runoff from, from having, you know, serious water quality impacts. Um, and I, you know, we, we would also be interested from hearing any of the experts here on whether, um, whether they're aware of those and, and, you know, whether it might make sense to, to include some kind of requirement like that here. Finally, uh, as has been discussed, and the area surrounding the development is home to a variety of state listed endangered and threatened species and species of special concern. And, you know, given the, the impacts of heavy construction, in particular blasting, um, on nesting water, waterfowl and other species, as well as the proximity of the development to, um, known nesting areas within the estuary, um, you know, we would suggest limiting those types of activities to times of year when, when, when the impacts can be limited, you know, which might mean, you know, fall and winter for blasting, for example. So, um, that's the brief version. Um, we have, you know, more extensive comments, written comments in the record, um, but I, I won't take any more of your time tonight. If, uh, you do have questions though, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Flynn, this is Commissioner Boda. First, thank you for, for coming out and making public comments. Um, on page three, um, second to last paragraph, last sentence, uh, there's a comment says, "Several large areas of the property not covered by stormwater management system would drain north into existing wetlands, which the developer proposes to improve east to the catch basin on Rose Hill and south into the wetlands." Can you just talk a little bit more about, um, about that particular concern? Maybe Jamie, you could pull up the map?
Yeah, and that's, thank you, Commissioner. So my, uh, my reading of the plans suggested that, so we're here, I think we're talking about, you know, the, the stormwater mitigation area. So this is an area of the property not covered by the stormwater management system, if I understand correctly. Um, and there's, my, my review of the plan suggested there's a fair amount of lawn area, um, um, up there. And, you know, you know, so the concern, I think, is related to, um, you know, lawn treatments and things like that, making their way into that, that northern wetland. And then through infiltration or otherwise, kind of back into, um, back into the rest of the system. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Looks like the app or the representative for the applicant has a hand raised to address.
I just want to point you to the right page, Jamie, for this conversation. Um, of the site plan, it'll be PDF page five, but it's sheet four.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which is the watershed mapping. Uh, so the, on this, just, uh, if you can zoom out a hair, Jamie, uh, the, the pale green area, um, that her cursor was on, on the right-hand side drawing, that is the total area that is, the water is going to be draining towards that northern wetland. Um, you'll notice the, the bulk, uh, the lion's share of this, uh, is the existing woods, uh, as we go up the hill along the west-hand side, um, as well as the woods that are remaining untouched on the northeast corner. Obviously, the wetlands themselves, water that falls in them is going to drain into them. That's, that's self-evident. The only lawn areas, um, that are going to be maintained are, uh, to be maintained that would be draining in this direction are, are right around building four, um, to, uh, the east of that, around the north-hand side, uh, to the west of that, and then the backyard of building five and a little tiny bit of the area between buildings, uh, five and six. Um, otherwise, the rest of this is, uh, graded to drain towards the road. Um, as you'll look behind building six and seven, those areas are draining towards the, towards the road. It's essentially any overland flow that would sheet flow beyond into the road, uh, collected by the catch basins and directed into the basin itself. The area, um, if we scroll up a hair, uh, Jamie, in front of buildings one and two, um, this area, the area where you see the couple of trees to the left side of the road, this is what we're proposing to remain in, that's currently brush, um, but part of the removal of invasives and then, um, to be planted with that, uh, New England, uh, field grass mix and then allowed to return back to brush. That's not going to be an area that's going to be fertilized and maintained. That's going to be, you know, uh, a net, remaining a natural buffer in that area. Literally right where your cursor is, Jamie.
Jamie Frederick and the Wiltland Agent, I kind of had a similar question, uh, in regards to kind of clarifying the difference between kind of this area here, if you will, and the, the graded slope to the west of the basin. And I'm going to jump to kind of the, the tree maintenance plan, I think, which is where they kind of show the different treatment, long-term treatment areas, um, of the site. Um, so this green or sorry, orange area is that, um, area we were talking about that would drain towards the wetland that's going to remain natural, um, undisturbed slopes. Um, and then this is the other area I was talking about. Um, and if you, you look at the call out, it says brush to be undisturbed after construction, seed with New England native warm season grass mix. So there is a bit of a, a written response, um, addressing that concern, um, in letter from Zach. And then, so my understanding is that this area is kind of left natural. If there's any areas that need to be seeded, they'd get seeded with that mix. This area would be seeded with that mix and kind of, my understanding is left to revert to whatever it wants to be, potentially with management of invasives during that monitoring period, um, kind of in association with the wetland, um, monitoring, uh, assuming that's something the commission thought was important to do.
That is the correct interpretation, Jamie.
This is Commissioner Begman. With, with the suggestion of turning a cul-de-sac into a T, is that possible on this plan? It, it, we, we have the cul-de-sac because of the fire truck had to have enough, like, that the road between five to seven was too long for the fire truck to back out. So the fire truck had to be able to go around the cul-de-sac. Is there a way to reduce the pervious, impervious surface there?
So the, Zach George, Mike, can you hear me? I'm not lighting up my little green box.
I can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, Zach George and Giuliano Associates. Um, so that cul-de-sac is from the brand for regulations. That, that, that is what, from a zoning standpoint, what the regulations would like for turnaround purposes. Um, so that was what was, uh, gone with. I, I'll be honest, we didn't look into a T turnaround because we were trying to meet as many of the, the blanket regulation requirements for zoning as well while going through this. Um, could it be done with a T? Probably. Um, I don't have feedback from the fire department as to whether Branford Fire Department is considering use of a T in general. Um, but that, that's the honest answer is we use a zoning complaint turnaround.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Any other questions for Mr. Flynn? Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
But this is Doug Anderson again. Jamie, just for the record, I sent you a, um, previous sewer, um, agreement, access agreement that we utilized on a, a couple lots over on Euclid Street. So if you did want to share that with the commission of, of what the town provided us, you know, for that particular project, which, again, I'm, I'm assuming I don't have a definitive answers, but this is how that sewer access, um, agreement worked.
Mr. Anderson, this is Commissioner Boda. Is there, in this process, any either outreach or education that happens to, um, those homeowners who have the opportunity to connect? Is that part of the project? Is that part of what the town does? How do people know that they have, that they may have the oppor- one, that they have the opportunity to connect? And two, that maybe, um, there's either a discounted rate or a subsidized, um, subsidy offered by the town?
Yeah. So, so from my understanding, basically, um, you know, assuming we get through this process and we get through the zoning process, then the, the next process is that the, uh, WP ECA has to create a sewer district for this area. And that, that involves, from my understanding, public hearings, input from the neighborhood groups and things of that nature. So there, there is a whole process that, uh, that happens with respect to that. And from my understanding is that, you know, the town will kind of, again, weigh all these costs. And, and those costs are estimates, right? So there's, it, it, they could come lower, they could come higher. Um, that was their, you know, most recent estimate as of, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So, um, I, I do believe there's a pretty thorough process of making the public aware of this and incentivizing the fee and the ability for people to, um, connect, you know, obviously because of the investment that the town is making in the, in the, you know, in the infrastructure. Uh, obviously, they want to get that, you know, money back as best they can within the, the parameters of what the WP ECA feels is a kind of a appropriate, uh, tie-in charge. So in the document I saw you, I sent to Jamie, that the typical Branford tie-in charge for existing, you know, sewers from, that were installed many years ago is $6,000. Um, there are different sewer districts where those numbers, you know, are, are, are greater, uh, which obviously this would be. Um, but in that document, it's, it's basically, there's a very simple document. There's an acknowledgement of the tie-in fee. And then if you don't pay that up, you can pay it upfront and, you know, not owe the town any money. Or they basically take whatever that fee is, you sign a one-page document, they charge 10% interest, they come up with, with what the annual fee is, and it's that fee for 15 years. So Jamie should have a copy of that on her, uh, email.
Jamie Frederick and the Wiltland Agent, I can screen share this agreement. Um, my understanding is, again, that this is a very much case-by-case basis, that there would be a public hearing process involved with the project. Um, if, you know, the commission feels it's important and or relevant, you can request the applicant perhaps consent to an extension. And I can ask the town engineer if there's any more information he can weigh in on the process. Um, of course, that process hasn't happened, so he can't tell you what the result of the process will be. Um.
This is Commissioner Boda. I don't, I don't think that that, that that step is necessary. I think, again, the applicant has reiterated, and we've had quite a bit of testimony about the, um, implementation of sewers and, and why that would offset, um, filling of a wetland. Um, and so I, I think just having a little, this little bit of additional information as to that process is that's not one that I recall us, um, being in front of us. So it's just been educational.
Jamie Frederick and the Wiltland Agent. So I think, I think this, this, uh, example probably lays out like kind of the main points. I don't know the, the specifics of this agreement. I do know that there's a sewer access charge for any undeveloped property when it's connecting to sewers. So I'm not sure how this relates to the specifics that would be to this project or sewer district. But I do think kind of the, the outline of criteria here might be comparable. Um, I don't know if that makes sense, but I guess I just want to like, make sure everyone doesn't see the $6,000 and say, oh, that's the, the price it's going to be.
No, no.
I think it's a little bit apples and oranges. Um, but I think that.
The front though.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we, uh, done with Commissioner comments for this public hearing?
Um.
Any other members of the public? I don't see any hand raised.
So I believe all of the commissioners and the applicant have the latest exhibit list. I made sure, uh, just before the beginning of the meeting, that I had the latest exhibit list in the Dropbox that is linked to on the agenda. Um, certainly, uh, you know, after public comment, we're going to want to let the applicant speak again, but I don't know if the commissioners want to take a quick look at that exhibit list to help prompt whether you have any additional questions or concerns that you want to raise.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Just for clarification, this is the list that ends with number 63?
Good question. Yes, it is.
Now 64?
Now 64.
Uh, now 65, actually. So 64 will be the screenshots that, um, that George Logan shared and 65 will be the sewer agreement example.
Um, so, uh, this is Commissioner Boda. I want to just acknowledge I'm about to sign off as it is time. Um, and I will make a comment to, as you're, I'll move into this next step. Um, I would be fine with closing the public hearing. Um, I, I don't have any additional questions. And then, um, yeah.
Is there any closing comments from the applicant?
Well, I suppose we'd like to thank the commission for the time they've devoted to this application, not only the current version of the application, but the prior application as well. Um, it's been somewhat contentious, but also somewhat collaborative with the commission in terms of designing and helping us develop a project that we think complies with the regulations. We think is an improvement from an inland wetlands perspective, certainly from the current conditions and from the prior approval. Um, and we think that that is a result of the dialogue we've had with the commission over the last six to eight months or so. Uh, I'd also point out that I think our experts, both Zach and George, have done an excellent job of addressing the concerns and the questions of the commission. If you look at their comment letter from CLA, I think it's fair to say that they have addressed each and every comment from your consulting engineers, uh, regarding their, um, analysis of this project. Um, I do think we spent a lot of time last month and today discussing, uh, whether there are feasible and prudent alternatives to this project. I think we've established that the project that is before you is the most feasible and prudent alternative. Uh, it's certainly an improvement from an environmental perspective from the approved subdivision. And it's also a project that would, could be approved from, uh, the perspective of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we think we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's. Um, I would be remiss. I, I know that the public comment from the Farm River and Jamie Flynn, um, I do appreciate their kind of content neutral, uh, analysis of this application. Um, and I do appreciate their acknowledgement that this application does have some benefits, namely, uh, an improvement to the, the, with the sewer system would be an improvement to the environment and hopefully eliminate some of the negative impacts from the nitrogen from failing septic systems. Um, and certainly, I think we've spent a the nitrogen from failing septic systems. And certainly, I think we've spent a lot of time talking about the septic system. I hope based on the testimony of our experts, Mr. Logan, the Commission would find that the installation of a sewer system is a benefit not only for this particular project, but a potential benefit for the entire neighborhood. And that would result in a benefit to the inland wetlands as a whole, and the watercourses as a whole. Certainly, we think, we are asking that you approve this application. We think that it deserves to be approved. And if there's any more questions before we sign off, we're happy to try to answer those questions.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland agent, just a quick reminder for all the Commissioners, once the public hearing is closed, you can't go back and ask the applicant any questions. So make sure that you, don't be shy.
Got to note that Commissioner Boda is leaving. We do still have a forum for the items.
This is Commissioner Begum. Jamie, you said you could put up the exhibit list. The only thing I would, that I would look through is the peer review and the last, just to, I know it's been said that they've met the questions, but I just wanted to look at this, the very end of it. Oh, yeah, this letter, this letter.
Is this the part you're talking about?
Yeah. Right, so this section regarding the previous comment, 3132, the applicant has presented an alternatives the Commission can consider where the applicant has provided sufficient detail. And then those questions below were the questions that they had asked earlier, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Yes.
Yeah, so my understanding is that their comment in bold italics kind of applies to 31, 32, and 33.
Right. And I took it to mean that we had presented evidence of feasible and prudent alternatives, both last month and tonight. I'd send a letter discussing feasible and prudent alternatives, but ultimately, it's up to the Commission to determine and make that determination that's part of their discussion of this application.
That's kind of the way that I interpreted it as well. They were basically saying information has been provided and it's up to the Commission to determine whether or not it's sufficient, you know, in the, in your analysis of that prudent and feasible alternative presentation that's been provided. Certainly, if there's anything specific that you think is missing from that analysis, I think that's pertinent to share with the applicant.
This is Commissioner Begum. The only thing I was thinking of is there was talk that the, at one point, but I think we've gone past this, but that the sewers for the 20 homes was, or for the 10 homes was more, that they decided not to do it. And is there facts behind that? Is that's the reason why they gave up on that project? Is there, is there information, factual information that it was the cost of the sewer?
I'll let the applicant respond to that. I think the subdivision had septic systems.
No, it's actually what, I'm sorry, Doug Anderson, for the record. Basically, the original subdivision had a sewer agreement with the town to bring sewers to the project. And the initial design and scheme of that sewer system was slightly different than what got designed through the town. So to me, it seems like the developer kind of got caught in a kind of a quagmire there because they had signed on to a sewer agreement that would more or less put the entire cost of the sewer infrastructure on the developer based on a different design than what was actually designed by the town. So basically, that developer signed on to a million-dollar-plus sewer expenditure over 10 single-family building lots, which economically doesn't work, right? So it's just the sewer cost alone was $100,000 plus all your road costs and so forth. So one of the other dynamics that existed, and this was part of the process, that didn't previously exist, Paul Santa Barbara, who is the owner of the property, owns the adjacent northern property. So in our initial discussions with the town, we did show them a means in which we could bring a sewer line up through his property and tie into the manhole at the top of the street, which didn't exist with any of the developers. However, that did not, that did not provide sewer for the, for the rest of the neighborhood. And then there was some debate about whether they wanted to do it or not. We met with the WPCA and, you know, everybody's consensus was that, no, we don't want to see that. We want to see sewers to this area because they need it. We'd rather have you look at this in a different scenario and then, you know, off to the races of where we are today. So those are the dynamics of why this project has not worked. And what has happened is it's gone through multiple owners and sold at, you know, less and lesser dollars on each owner. So and based on the fact that 15 years or so have gone by, you know, obviously, common sense would tell you that it wasn't feasible to build this project under the agreements that they had signed on to when they got the project approved.
And Doug, just to confirm, I mean, during the course of the public hearings, we discussed that 22 units is kind of the minimum you need in order to maintain that the cost of the septic, to absorb the cost of the septic or the sewer system. And clearly, 10-lot subdivision, you cannot absorb the cost of...
A million-dollar-plus sewer, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Papantonas, I have a couple questions. So, in other words, you're approved for 10-lot subdivision with sewers, but it's, but in your, it's your position that it's not economically feasible?
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
And you don't want to give up Building 4, which is in the wetlands, because, again, in your opinion, it makes this project not economically feasible?
That is correct. We do not want to give up Building 4 because that would eliminate two units and that would make the project not economically feasible. We've also proposed wetland mitigation in consideration for that impact. And certainly, when making the evaluation on Building 4, we would ask the Commission to consider not only the impact from the 10-lot subdivision, but also the fact, or consider the quality of this particular wetland. It's, we've had discussions and George Logan opined about this. It's basically a low-quality, low-functioning wetland that's been disturbed. So based on all those factors, we're asking the Commission to consider and allow us to keep Building Number 4.
Okay, but Commissioner Papantonas, again, patently, this is, it's still wetlands, right? And our regulations don't distinguish between the quality of the wetlands?
I, I, I disagree. I think as a wetlands commission, you are allowed to consider the quality of wetlands in making your decision. As a matter of fact, I think early on, Jamie had passed out a pamphlet from the DEP. And the DEP's pamphlet did say that the Commission could consider the quality of the wetlands when evaluating whether there's a feasible and prudent alternative. And I'll see if I can put my fingers on it right now. But yeah, I think you absolutely can consider the quality of a wetland. I think you would regulate a pristine, highly-functioning wetland much differently than you would regulate a low-quality, disturbed, non-functioning wetland.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland agent, I do think that quality, functions, and services can be considered when considering wetland impacts and proposed restoration mitigation. I think the distinction to really keep in mind is just because it's maybe a low-impact wetland, doesn't mean that it's exempt from wetland regulation or that no mitigation needs to occur because it's low quality and what functions is it really providing? So I think it's a consideration. It's not the be-all, end-all on either end. And it certainly, you know, doesn't exempt it from needing to have considerations to offset any impacts.
I certainly agree. It's subject to the Commission's regulations, and I certainly agree with that. And I did take out the Inland Wetlands Commissioners' Guide to Site Plan and Review. And on page 11, it says when the Commission's evaluating whether there's an impact to the wetlands, the Commission can consider, the impact of the wetland depends on two factors. One, the value of the wetland resources impacted, and two, the type and degree of the impact. So I do think that the Commission is allowed to consider the quality of the wetlands when evaluating a particular impact.
Any other questions, Commissioner Papantonas?
No. This is Commissioner Begum. I'm just going to ask one more time. Ms., Chair Bassman asked about moving Building 4. You can't split it and add one unit to one of the three and one unit to one of the other three. Is it just that the space won't allow for that if you made them, right, if you split Building 4 and added one unit to each of the three-unit buildings?
Zach, George, and Giuliano Associates. So we did look at alternatives of the buildings in terms of spacing and different configurations. What we are required from zoning is to have a 30-foot building-to-building spacing. So in splitting these two units up and putting them elsewhere into other four-building units, it ends up pushing what is currently labeled Building 5 much further to the north, because we are really limited as we're coming up against setbacks and needing this cul-de-sac to the south. So it pushes these buildings further down. And we see, essentially, we end up impacting more of the, of the northern wetland, the southwestern corner of it, ends up being, becoming fill and pushing out. It changes the shape of the impact. It doesn't eliminate it.
Thank you. Just needed to ask one more time.
Yep.
Anybody else? This is Commissioner Bassman. Given the timeframe and the fact that we have a number of items still to deal with, I guess at this point in time, as Commissioner Boda suggested before she retired for the evening, that we should close the public hearing tonight and at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Commission in two weeks, take up the deliberations on application 240902.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland agent, hate to be a stickler here, but like I said, the Commission has 35 days to make a determination. Oftentimes, the Commission wants to start deliberations, have staff draft something, and then review that document and make a final decision. We do not have two regularly scheduled meetings within the 35-day period. It is late. I don't think we want to deliberate right now. The question is, do you want to try and schedule a special meeting now? Or do you want to wait and maybe schedule that the next meeting? I do think that we might want to be looking at that and/or asking for a two-day extension to deliberate, I suppose, from the applicant so that you can continue deliberations to the February 13th meeting? Because I think our last day to make a decision is February 12th.
As opposed to picking a date right now? Is that the alternative, Jamie?
You could pick a date now. You could pick a date at the January 23rd meeting. Or, yeah, or ask for that extension. But I think if you can try and do it in the timeframe, it's probably a deal.
Right. So we could start deliberation on the 23rd, and I guess if we then would have a special meeting?
To review the document.
To review and hopefully then be able to conclude within the timeframe of the 35 days.
Unless you wanted to be doing the bulk of deliberations at the special meeting where you don't have other business, then you would have to do the scheduling now.
Commissioner Papantonas, I want to point out that February 11th is a state holiday. Not a federal holiday, a state holiday. I don't know if we can have a meeting that day.
It would be tight to schedules. But I can't even, no, so, yeah, yeah.
So we probably have to ask for an extension to the next meeting.
Well, one minute. I'm getting confused here.
If you can't get it done.
Okay. So continue deliberations to January 23rd.
Right.
Theoretically, we could potentially have a special meeting on January 30th or February 6th. So if you're comfortable with figuring it out on the 23rd, we can take that approach. I just want the Commission to be aware for scheduling purposes that we may have to schedule a special meeting.
This is Commissioner Bassman. My comment would be, given the amount of time that's already invested in this, I hate to be up against a date where we have little wiggle room. Why can't we just see if the 30th can be held open in the event that we make little progress on the 23rd and will need the time on the 30th to stay within the guideline days?
I suggest we take it up on the 23rd. Figure it out.
Just everyone keep in mind, we're going to have to schedule that. And we'll figure it out. We've got a hand raised. Is this scheduling-based?
It is a scheduling-based question. Are you able to cancel special meetings? Just if you guys were to schedule it for the 30th, you can always cancel it if you don't need it, correct, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, we could also just take a tentative pencil headcount. I would say try and keep your, we usually try and do special meetings on Thursdays. Try and keep your Thursdays open. And we'll go from there. Hopefully, it won't be a long meeting, so. I think everyone's brain's a little fried right now. I can also send out like a doodle or something with, we can try and set dates that way, but we'll pick it up again at the January 23rd meeting unless anyone has any further scheduling comments or concerns.
Okay. This is Commissioner Bassman. With that added wisdom from staff regarding timing, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing this evening and start deliberations on the 23rd of January. Is there a second?
Commissioner Papantonas, a second?
I will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Gokoski?
Commissioner Gokoski, aye.
Commissioner Begum?
Commissioner Begum, aye.
Commissioner Papantonas?
Commissioner Papantonas, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. So we will reopen, or not reopen, but we will start deliberations on the 23rd for 240902. Thank you all for
Thank you.
... this evening and the extensive amount of effort that has gone into this application. Hopefully, we can wrap this up within the next 35 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, enforcement. Season correct, 240701, 1, 5, and 7, Deaconhill Road, vegetation removal and earth disturbance within wetland and adjacent upland area. It's the continuation of the show cause hearing. I'm assuming that as we have done previously, that we will table this and continue this.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland agent, my recommendations to table unless the owner has any points they'd like to raise. I'm not aware of any change of circumstances.
No, nothing has changed. Doug Anderson.
Table and continue to January 23rd.
240701 continued until the 23rd. Season correct, 240901, and the notice of violation for nine High Plains Road, 4D Hickory Hill Lane. The sedimentation in the pond located on the property known The sedimentation in the pond located on the property known as 40 Hickory Hill Lane. Again, a continuation of the show cause hearing. Jamie, any new information?
Yes and no, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, they're still waiting on the appropriate storm event to do the inspection. My recommendation at this point is to table till the March 27th meeting. So that way, we're not bringing it up every time. And to give, you know, all parties a little bit of peace. And if, of course, they can have an inspector done sooner and want to schedule it, they can contact the Inland Wetland Office and we'll arrange that.
Yeah, if these temperatures keep up, we're not, we're not gonna have any new information for a while.
Yeah, so it seems kind of ridiculous to check in every two weeks. Any commissioners feel differently? Let the rubber be black, people are shaking their heads, no. So it is continued to March 27th.
240901 is continued till January 23rd. Oh, pardon me, March, what was it, 20?
March 27th.
27th, okay. Cease and correct 240902, 17182 Leets Island Road, clearing of earth disturbance without a permit. Continuation of show cause hearing. Again, I ask staff, any new information?
I got an email today, they provided an update, if you want, I can screen share it. Essentially, it's, it's stating that they're working on it, they've retained a lawyer. They've maintained communication with soil scientists, contacted and joined as voting member of the State of Connecticut Farmers Bureau. I'm kind, I'm, I'm pair, I'm not reading the whole thing, I'm just kind of reading bits and pieces. They had a training today, so they were not able to attend the meeting, so they've provided this written update. I guess my question for the commission is, my main concern is getting a plan, getting the site in compliance, whether it's through, you know, whatever that, that means. And making sure any activity that needs to happen on the site can happen seasonally appropriate. Do you want to table and continue to the January 23rd meeting? Or do you want to give him until the February 13th meeting? Kind of acknowledging that he's working on it and two weeks isn't a whole lot of time for him to get it done, submitted, and for the commission to take a look at it before the meeting.
This is Commissioner Basserman, and, and nothing is in jeopardy?
I don't, I don't believe that there's anything changing on site. And I don't think that, I think by the spring, we might want to be seeing something happen, so I don't want to table it too late. But given the workload and that both the commission and the property owner have, might be.
Yeah, let's not put out the 23rd, move it to February, what was the date?
February 13th.
All right, we'll continue 240902 to February 13th. Hopefully, some additional information can be provided on that date. And you'll check with the homeowner to see if at least we can get their attendance?
Yeah, I would say the one caveat is if they're not available February 13th, but they're available February, or January 23rd and have the materials, we could do it then. But I would say otherwise, February 13th is probably ideal. And I'm sure he'd be happy to have more time.
Cease and correct 241201, 175 Cherry Hill Road. Non-compliant with sedimentation erosion control plan from inland wetland 220705. Results in sedimentation in the watercourse. My understanding is you, you've been out to the site recently, Jamie?
Yes, I was out there this afternoon. I'm sorry, I need, I need like a quick one-minute break to just get up and stretch and get blood flowing through my body. Can we take like a three-minute recess?
Three-minute recess, you got it. Back at 10:00, 10:12. Or whatever, three minutes.
Those stockpiles have been relocated further interior to the lots, further away from the wetlands. I did not stop that work from occurring because I considered that it was likely to have a net positive impact relative to the erosion potential to wetland resources. So at this point, now that a majority of that work, I believe, is done, my recommendation would be that those stockpiles have silt fence installed around them in compliance with the originally approved subdivision plans, which called for stockpiles to be ringed with silt fence. So I think that being said, I'd maybe hand it over to Zach Georgina to address any recommendations he has and clarify anything from his vantage point.
Zach Giorgina Giuliano Associates, project engineer. Yeah, Jamie essentially hit the high points, I was indeed out there. God, it's been a long week, I want to say it was Monday, maybe it was Tuesday, when we got back from our holiday shutdown. And I gotta say, the property owner and site contractor has done a lot of work in terms of cleaning up the site and putting the, a lot of controls in and measures to prevent further incidents. My understanding is Jamie hasn't seen anything, no further incidents based on what they're doing. And at this point in the year, the name of the game here is going to be upkeep on these and maintenance to prevent anything happening further. Unfortunately, as I'm sure you guys noticed, winter finally showed up. So we are past the available grow season of getting any vegetation established between now and March to April is when we're gonna start being able to see any type of vegetation stabilization there again. So it's a, it's a big game of playing the, what we can do to minimize erosion potentials. Uh, one of the things that they've been doing is essentially taking some of this fill material and leveling some of these, some of these lots, which is gonna be good in terms of preventing the erosion, as long as they continue to do this on areas that they had already tore up with vehicles. Obviously, we don't want to be turning vegetative areas into dirt, that's not beneficial. But stockpiles are, and the reason we, we, you know, I expect in and have recommended ringing with the stockpiles as well is because of the slopes that stockpiles are indicative of, you do have a lot of erosional potential. And once that material has been picked up in, in solution, it then is much more likely to travel. So by lowering those slopes, laying down those stockpiles and actually just using them to smooth grade, you're creating a less erosion-prone surface, which is beneficial to the situation at hand. Also, moving those piles further away from the, the, I'm gonna call it the, the, the drop-off here, but moving them further away from lots 6, 7, the tail end of 4 and 5, moving them in closer to lots 2 and 3. You're gonna see that you're just putting distance between where those piles are and flat ground. So that any erosion that does pick up and manages to get through a silt fence, uh, once these piles are rung appropriately, you're gonna see that dropping out of solution before we get to where the, the grade picks up as we get closer to the road, uh, between lot 7, 6, and going up towards the Cherry Hill right away. So those are beneficial actions. Directly, and I had spoken to Bruno previously on this, but directly outside of the spillway, my recommendation would be a series of two to three staked straw bale check dams. Essentially, you, you know when water's gonna be coming through here, once it goes down the slope that hasn't been vegetated yet, it's gonna be picking up velocity. So by staking these check dams in place, you would create, adding these, you'd be slowing that water and slowing the erosional potential. Another addition, since we've got the goal line defense established, so to speak. Actually, that's a great one, Jamie, right there. So essentially, you'd be putting the, the check dam, you know the, the stone rip rep, you see there's the spillway. And then if you were to essentially, right at the toe of that, have a row of hay bales. And then midway down this slope, same thing, another row of hay bales. You're essentially twice halving the distance and velocity potential of that, of that flow. I would also recommend, and I, I've spoken with Bruno about this, he's looking to implement this as well, essentially running silt fence midway, or a staked hay bale, I gave him the options, the two, depends what he can get his hands on. Midway along this entire slope, again, to just halve that distance and minimize that erosion potential there.
This is Commissioner Basserman, do you, do you have a, a, a written document that summarizes the actions that in fact you think are warranted? And, and has that been presented to the property owner? Or was this a verbal communication?
Uh, this is, so my, my office was shut down for, for the two weeks here during the holidays. So we did not, I, we didn't work, I didn't get paid to work, work didn't happen on our end. So we had the meeting. Fred Rousseau of Quality and Bruno had agreed at that point that they were going to put in a lot of what they have done since then. And I've had a chance to make recommendations, I have not had a chance to formalize a document. We have at this point had several documents produced. As you recall, back in March of this past year, I did formalize a markup with recommendations at that, at that point. And a, a lot of those implementations are still completely valid and should be acted upon. Those documents have, have been around. We can again produce a document, but this is a moving target. I can produce 30 documents, 30 documents over 30 days. And as silt fence has changed in the situation warrants, we're gonna, it's gonna be a very fluid, mobile situation here as we try to maintain this, because we're, we're in defense mode, uh, until the spring, we can give vegetation on this.
This is Commissioner Basserman, Jamie, we, we need to consider the cease and correct that we have, right? And, and, and I assume we don't want to lift it at this point?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so, yeah, so right now, there's the cease and correct order that's in existence. It was issued due to the sediment traveling down the roadway that got to the watercourse. I think there's two ways the commission can look at it. One is that that has been addressed and you could lift it. If you're going to do that, I think you really need to stress that the site is not exactly in compliance with what the permit issued was. So my recommendation would probably be to leave it in place. However, they have made huge improvements out there. I am hoping that they will continue to make improvements as needed. A lot of the things that I was concerned about, Bruno was saying, was scheduled for tomorrow. And the things that weren't already necessarily on his to-do list. I've touched base with Zach and he's provided recommendations for. So I don't know that stopping them from doing any site work is necessary, but I think you might want to still hold the fact that you need. So one of the recommend, one of the requirements of the cease and correct order is that if there's a rain event of half an inch or more, that erosion control professional does an inspection and makes recommendations for any improvements that need to be made on site. So I think the middle ground might be to keep the order in place and require those updates. And then assuming there's no bigger problems, maybe in the spring, everything gets kind of more stabilized with some vegetation. And then you can maybe consider reassessing things. Considering that the order has been determined, assuming that you can come to an agreement and you don't feel the need to check in periodically. We could, I could schedule it based on site progress, site concerns, and bring it back when I felt that it was warranted to take different action, or, you know, that there might be consideration for different action to be taken.
This is Commissioner Basserman, but again, you know, we have a cease and correct. Now, would we amend the cease and correct, modify the cease and correct that we initially sent to capture the discussion this evening? How do we formalize, if you will, the going forward piece?
Yeah, so I don't think it would necessarily need to be amended, but I do think that we would, if you were to leave it in place, send an update letter providing guidance and context of what's expected. So that way, it's clear and, you know, everyone's aware, it's not a moving target. So, you know, if it's, we continue to want, you know, we understand that you've made improvements out there. You know, you asked about the written document of recommendations. Um, you know, you asked about the written document of recommendations. Maybe it's that we don't necessarily get a site plan, uh, markup of all the recommendations, but maybe, you know, with that, that half inch of rain event, we would just get a written document saying these are the recommendations as needed, maybe a sketch to show where onsite it is. Maybe that's something that staff can handle, assuming that it doesn't get catastrophic again. And then once we have some site stabilization, bringing it back and addressing it. And, uh, the, I think the biggest reason why I'm hesitant to say go ahead and lift it is because there has been a lot of activity on lots seven through eleven that really can't be addressed this time of year because you can't seed it. And so I think you kind of want to reserve your interest in making sure that that area is being heavily monitored and, um, maintained. But again, I don't think it, I don't think there's a lot of benefit to necessarily stopping site work. Cause then you just have this extended period of time where you're not, you know, working towards the goal of the end product and it's just sitting open. So I think as long as they're maintaining the erosion controls, it makes sense to let them.
Commissioner Bagamun, two questions. Um, last time I think mats were talked about, some sort of mats for the big piles. Is, is that still going to be happening? And then the second question is, is that road now being plowed by town? And if so, how do they avoid moving those hay bales? They're, okay, so there's no plowing to worry about.
It won't be plowed by the town. Um, I don't know if the property owner will plow it.
Uh, Commissioner Bagamun, then in terms of plowing, my thinking is that how would they know where the road? I would hate for the plow to remove those hay socks, right? I mean, our stakes sticking them, we'd have to get two feet of snow, but still. Um, and then there are those, it looks like there are bales in the road around Catch Basin, so.
Thank you, Zach. Uh, i- if, if I may, uh, Commissioner Bagamun, this, there is a road with a curb. Um, the concern of hitting the, I mean, the hay bales are, are quite obvious unless you get a two feet of snow, that there's a lump in the road not to hit there. And beyond that, how to public plows or anyone in general not jump the curb, e- every snowstorm across the board. Um, I understand the concern, but, uh, it, it's not a public road currently. Uh, it's a private road. It would be, essentially in that situation, what I would recommend doing from a procedural standpoint is if uh, either the, the property owner, um, Mr. Chacon or, uh, the site contractor was to plow the road or wanted to plow the road. Step one would be you go out and you pull the hay bales out of the way. You plow and then you literally set the hay bales back, back in the way. Uh, procedurally speaking, that's what I would recommend. Um, or because it isn't an active, it's not a public road yet. Uh, they could just run a single blade up the center for construction access to allow it to continue. The, you don't need to have the full twenty-four, uh, foot open. There's, there's not a precedence to require that. There's no residential demand on this road.
Yeah, and I think the point of if there's enough snow where you can't see the hay bales, you put them, you replace them afterwards makes sense, because if you have that much snow, you're not likely to be having a lot of water running down the curb line.
So did, did we agree that we would keep in place cease and correct twenty-four, twelve oh one and send a
Well, before we Yeah, so, um, there is some erosion control matting installed that we discussed today that that would be extended, um, kind of along in certain areas. I don't believe there's a plan currently to put any matting around the basin interior, but this steep slope kind of within the, the cherry hill extension right away, if you will. Um, they plan on extending that in both directions. Over here, I sound like no, but it sounds like there's the recommendation that that additional measure of erosion controls kind of Is that correct? Oh, you can't, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. So would it be correct to, so you were talking about putting the check, um, hay bales below the overflow. It sounded like you were also suggesting that on this, this steep slope around the outside of the basin, extending staked hay bales or a silt fence to kind of bisect and slow down the water coming down that, is that correct?
Correct. That is a
Matting?
The, the idea is, uh, essentially you're going to have, e- even with matting, uh, if you have a heavy enough rain, rain flow event, you're going to have silt and fines moving underneath. Um, if you'd go with the staked hay bales or a silt fence, um, that's a physical barrier that's tied into the ground. So when that water that's carrying those silt and fine hits that, that's a, that, that's a hard stop and hard check dam there. Um, the erosion control mats are really more beneficial for uh, that impact erosion where your rain is hitting and picking it up versus once you get a sizable rain and, and, and that movement. In a perfect world where money is no object, yeah, I'd like to see the entire site either, uh, you know, haid for, uh, four to six inches, uh, deep. Uh, and, and I'd like to see, you know, mats on every, uh, every single slope. But I think if we really, if we keep the mats to, uh, the more, the actually true closer to three to one, the, the steeper slopes. Um, and mitigate more of the long flatter slopes like to the south of the basin, um, with silt fence and hay bale. I think that's going to be a more, um, feasible and, uh, um, manageable approach.
So this is Commissioner Pappen Tones. See, but this, the problem is that it wasn't done right the first time, right? So feasible and prudent. You, you gotta, you're supposed to do it correctly and you know, the weather has been really crazy in the past year. We don't want a catastrophic event where where you, you're backpedaling and trying to do cleanup again. We don't want this to happen again.
I, I do, I do understand and I, I, I un- I understand that. We also don't want to bankrupt a developer trying to do the site and then then you're, you're pulling bond money and it's on the town to fix this. So there's, there's a level of doing it correctly. And I'm, what I'm proposing is, I'm not, my improvements are not what I'm, I, I, I'm not cheaping out. What I'm saying there is these are, there are means to do everything. And if, like I said, money's no object. I would like to have see, see the entire site hydro seeded with heat, heat rays on it so that we could get lawn growing out here. But that's not prudent or feasible. But the solutions that I'm asked, I'm offering, uh, that I think are, you know, reasonable and good reliable solutions are, are within Connecticut's best management practices. And again, we're, we're in, we're in a, a defense mode here. Um, so the, the goal is, is get things implemented, get things contained and then maintain them. That's, that's the goal.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, in response to the matting of the stockpiles, I don't have a good picture of where the stockpiles. I mean, there's still stockpiles kind of near the road, but they're not of the size, the steepness, the proximity, um, to the road that they were before. So you can see in this picture, um, a new stockpile and you can kind of see how they've been grading it out, um, to grade. And it does have a distance before it meets the perimeter erosion controls. So I don't have concerns that it's immediately going to breach it. However, I do think this is a place where, um, like I was saying, consistent with the subdivision approval, they need to be putting erosion controls at the toe of that stockpile. And the stockpile is a much more manageable slope than what was existing before. And its erosion potential into areas of high concern is also much lower. Um, so to that end, I'm not sure that they need to put matting on the stockpiles, but I do think that they need to put erosion controls around them.
One hundred percent agree with, uh, with that, Jamie.
Uh, this is Commissioner Pappen Tones again. Uh, Mr. Georgina, you said that you haven't prepared that report yet uh, with your recommendations. I, I think that's something that needs to be in our record. I, I think we need to see it. I don't think, um, we can just go with, this is what we think we're gonna do. I want to, I think we need the actual paper on that.
We can prepare a document and get that document to this commission. I, in the four days that we've been back in the office, I have not had a chance to prepare that document yet.
I understand that. Just going forward, I think that we do need to see it.
Understood.
This is Commissioner Bassman. So Jamie, you'll work with, um, Mr. Georgina, uh, to pull whatever information you feel is pertinent for the, um, owner to have in his hands regarding the cease and correct?
Um, yeah. So how does the commission want to handle this? Do you want to continue it to the January twenty-third meeting so that you can review that document prepared by Giuliano Associates? And maybe allow for, you know, site work consistent with the approved plans to continue onsite as long as the erosion controls are actively being maintained. Um, and or I suppose if you want to say after the installation of the measures proposed by Giuliano Associates have been implemented, activity on site may commence again. In compliance with the approvals in place.
This is Commissioner Bagamun. Can we? Could we also say that, that we don't need to see it back if the letter comes in and staffer, uh, staff looks at, at that in writing and says it's good and then go with all those other things that you said?
If the com- if the commission's comfortable doing that, I think that that is reasonable, given the improvements that have been made, the maintenance that I've seen going on out there of those erosion control improvements. I think that that would be a fair way to move forward, assuming that the commission was comfortable doing that.
This is Commissioner Goklaski. I, I was, I was gonna suggest the same thing that Commissioner Bagamun was gonna say. Uh, i- if they're willing to do what they need to do, and I think they do, um, uh, are, are, are going to do it the right way. Um, I, I, I just think we, you know, Jamie, you just stay on top of it. If something happens, you have to open the doors to us again and let us know that we need to take further action, then we'll take further action. But and with the, with the ground being frozen and this being done, I mean, as long as the erosion controls are in place, uh, that you feel comfortable with, uh, I, I, I say you just follow up with them.
Commissioner Bassman, uh, Commissioner Amrod and, and, uh, Commissioner Beck, are you okay with that?
Commissioner Bagamun, yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jamie.
Uh, sorry, Bruno. Um, real quick, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I just want to identify on the record. Um, the commission did ask for stockpile composition to be identified. I think that you were asking for it in regards to erodability. We did get, um, soil testing in regards to composition of the soil and like metals and things in the soil. So that's in the record. I think now that the stockpile makeup onsite has been reconfigured, that's no longer a high concern, but I just wanted to mention that in case any of the commissioners had outstanding concerns there. Um, so I think the main thing is making sure, um, we get that initial recommendation from Giuliano Associate with, with a, with a markup on the site plan of what's proposed. And then moving forward, maybe it's just a written correspondence after any storm event of point five inches. And maybe we say until the spring when, um, some site stabilization can be established through vegetation establishment, um, at which point we can bring it back to the commission for discussion. So that's my, my thoughts there. I don't know if commissioners have anything they want to weigh in on or if you want to hand it over to the property owner.
Well, I think with the property owner, it'd be a good opportunity for him to chime in here.
Yeah, hey guys, it's, uh, Bruno Chacon. Um, I just want to let you know, uh, thank you first for, uh, taking this long, uh, at the end of the night to hear this. Uh, since this happened from the beginning of the last meeting, I've been on top of it every day. There's a ton of hay bales out there. Uh, we went above and beyond with all the check dams. Uh, that, uh, myself and Fred Russell from Quality thought and know with their professionalism that, uh, would help this settlement, uh, sediment, uh, capture what's going on there. And so that's the reason why we decided to level the piles there and, uh, you know, do what we had to do there. There is some problems on lot eight right now that tomorrow we're going to be assessing. Uh, Jamie saw me out there today with the guys. So that will be all addressed. And, uh, you know, as I said, every, I'm there every single day, morning, afternoon and night. When it rains, since we've had rain since the last storms, I've been out there and addressing it. I'm out there cleaning out the basins. So I'm on top of it. I'm not, uh, I'm not avoiding the, the problems, uh, per se. So I just want to let you guys, uh, know that. Thank you.
And thank you for taking it seriously. We appreciate the effort. A- any more discussion on this item? I think we've kind of beaten this one pretty good.
So just for clarification, commission wants me to send a follow-up letter outlining what we discussed and it's okay for work to continue?
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, is that correct? Okay. Again, assuming erosion controls are in place and any site work is compliant with the approvals, so.
Jamie, I, sorry. I have one more question when, when I have a chance. When, when these lots, uh, we talked about it briefly today, if they happen to convey over before, um,
Let's talk about that in the, the application.
Okay. All right. No problem. Thank you.
Uh, finally, uh, last item on enforcement, notice of violation three oh one Maple Street, removal of vegetation without a permit.
Okay. So I don't think there's any, is there anyone here for this?
I don't see anybody except there's an Evan Moore.
Oh, I just saw Dasty raise their hand.
Now, yeah, okay. Now it's up again. Now it's now.
Dasty, are you, are you here for a specific item? Um, Evan Moore, thanks for the quick reminder there, is with RWA and I think he was here for, for Cherry Hill Road. So I don't know if you want to just real quick, see if he has any. He, he's also been doing some site inspections relative to making sure the RWA property, their interests are, are I think protected. And with the water course being on the RWA property, I think that's why he's here because they're kind of involved by association. So I think he's here just to know what's going on.
Uh, Evan Moore with the RWA. Yeah, that's totally correct. I'm just, uh, monitoring how the site is improving. Thanks.
You're sharing the photos between when I can get out there.
Okay. Three oh one Maple.
Three oh one Maple, um, so I issued a notice of violation a while back. I don't even remember when. Um, because there was removal of vegetation within the upland review area. Uh, I didn't see a high erosion potential from the activity that had occurred. And our meetings were slammed and I didn't think we would have the time to discuss it. And I knew that they were ultimately looking to submit an application. So I basically sent a notice of violation and said, get your application submitted. Um, as you can tell, there's no application on the agenda. However, I have heard from the project engineer, they have at this point been out to the site and they're looking to get something submitted for the next meeting. So unless you want me to dive into any of the specifics, given that it's quarter of eleven, let's hope that we have an application for our January twenty-third meeting.
Getting pretty full now, yeah. No, let's take it down the road. Okay. Applications for review in the, well, then twenty-four, eleven oh two, one eighty-three Cherry Hill Road Extension and new single family residence.
All right. Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, this has been before the commission for a while. Excuse me. And the commission has to make a decision this evening and or authorize it for agent approval and I'll explain why later. So I don't think anything's really changed other than we've received the notification that the proof of notice that RWA and the Department of Health has been notified because they're located within our regional water authority watershed. Um, and the cease and correct order, I think, kind of made the commission pause at the last meeting as well in tangent with the, uh, the RWA notice issue. Um, and then in the interim, since our last meeting, it's come to my attention that lots are kind of being conveyed after the approval prior to start a site work. So I have a little bit of a concern about just making sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted in regards to proper authorization for the application and. Um. The activity that will be conducted through the application. So I have drafted a condition that I think addresses that. However, I was hoping that town council would be able to. Take a look at it and let me know if he had any comments. Potential improvements on that language. Um, so I guess my thought was given the. With the location of the activity relative to the wetlands. Um, if you didn't have any additional outstanding concerns, maybe it would be appropriate. To give me a couple of extra days to work with town council. Um, within that sixty five day period of time to. Hash out that language. Um. So.
When, when it, this is Commissioner Baserman, when is the sixty five?
Uh, next Thursday.
Yeah, so it's before.
Technically next Friday, I think, but I'm not here, so Thursday.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think definitely town council needs to weigh in on this one.
Honestly, that's my biggest concern at this point relative to the application. Um, and given the. Location of the proposed activity and. I, I, I. In the general compliance with the subdivision. Review, I don't think it would be inappropriate to allow it for agent approval. Um. Assuming that you guys are comfortable with that. So do you want me to share the site plan real quick? See if you get triggers. Reminder of what's going on and whether you have any. Concerns.
This is Commissioner Basman. I guess from my standpoint, if, if Bill is, and, and you come to an agreement. Uh, given the fact that we've reviewed this, we got a time clock, et cetera. Uh, I'm okay with agent approval unless Bill has something that you feel warrants commission review.
Uh, I, I don't, I'm only specifically asking him to look at that one thing and I don't know why he would recommend I bring that back to the commission. Um. So I know that we looked at the site plan for lot eight at the last meeting.
Say again, Jamie.
I know we looked at the site plan for lot eight at the last meeting. I don't recall there being any concerns raised at the time beyond the general site compliance and making sure we didn't have a. You know, mudslide going down Cherry Hill Road down to us. The water course, um. So do you want to look at it? I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at the staff report that I added at like, what, five thirty this evening? Um, that's a joke, obviously not. Um, or if you want to look at it, or if you trust me. And want me to handle it administratively.
Don't everybody answer at once.
Just real quick, just so that everyone can like, be like, oh yeah, I remember that. So the main thing I have is the erosion controls end at the property lines. Obviously, it needs to be in compliance with the subdivision approval. So basically a condition that relates situated together. Um. I don't think it's insurmountable. I think it can be addressed within the timeframe required. I don't think we need to request an extension and I personally don't think that the commission needs to review that language. Um, as long as it's to the satisfaction of town council. Um. Stormwater management, I don't think there are any outstanding concerns there. They're basically complying with the subdivision approval, except for the increase in impervious surface. Which is being addressed with some infiltrators and I'm. I'm gonna stop presenting because there's a professional here that can present for it. Um, if the commission needs more information, um, but I don't know if this is sounding familiar because I know that we at least looked at lot eight. Uh, I don't think we looked at lot ten because the commission already had decided they weren't going to be acting. Is there any concerns that you think you need to address or do you think this can be done administratively?
This is Commissioner Goklowski. Um, I, I'm comfortable. Um, with you doing the agent approval. Um, after speaking to town council, I'm sure if, if any flags are ra- raised, you're going to come right back to the commission as you always do. So. I'm fine with, um, you moving forward.
Any commissioner feel differently?
Commissioner Amrod, I'm, I'm fine with that too.
Commissioner Papentone, is that right?
I am as well. Okay. Application for receipt, we're not going to have a, uh.
One minute. Let's, we just missed IW twenty four eleven oh three, one ninety one.
Same old, same old, no.
Well, yeah, but it's another application. You have to have a conversation. If you want, you can streamline it.
I assume the same conversation is going to happen for eleven oh three as was eleven oh two with Bill.
Address that, please.
Alright.
Um, so here's the site plan for lot ten. It's the same thing as lot eight. The only deviation and limits of disturbance was essentially reviewed when you guys reviewed lot eleven. For the, um, the, the vegetated soil and the planting plan is included. Um, same concern as the other lot, lot eight, as far as making sure that, you know. Everyone's interests are protected throughout the development of these sites in the subdivision. Um. And compliance.
This, this.
Okay with agent review?
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I, I say that we move forward in IW twenty four eleven oh three. And IW twenty four eleven oh two can be worked out with, uh, agent approval along with town council.
Any commissioner feel differently? Okay. Now we have application for receipt inland, wetland twenty four twelve oh one, two Jaclyn Way. Possible agent review, you're going to be busy.
I'd rather it be at the workday than. Eleven o'clock at night. So in the interest of not having something else on our agenda at the next meeting. Um, this is extremely close to the wetlands. However, I think the activity is very minimal. Um. So essentially there's an existing deck on the back of the house. They are looking to, um, replace and enlarge it. Um. It's closest distance from the wetland is. Probably about approximately fifteen feet. The reason why I don't think it's. That. Significant of an activity is because. So here's the house driveway, existing deck. Wetland, it's already extremely close. If you look really, really careful, you can see that there's an existing fenced in area. They're planning on keeping that fence so it keeps their limits of activity. Enclosed to the same area. Um, the house was built trying to minimize the impact to the wetland, so it does drop down. So I think they're just trying to make, you know, more usable space in the back without grading, which would cause more impact to that wetland. Um, they are planning on keeping it open to drain below, so it shouldn't really change stormwater. Um. It seems like a reasonable ask. If you want, we can continue it to the next meeting and request that the homeowner attend. Or if you think that that is something I can review administratively, I can, um. I can, I think I would be comfortable doing that. Um. And I do, I believe have horrible picture. Of what the backyard looks like because it was an afterthought. So this is the fenced in area. So again, it's not like they're going to start. Extending into the wetland or anything. It is very close, but, uh, there's already existing stone. I think he mentioned he, he might bump that out, you know. Ten square feet to, to round it out with the proposed extension. Um. But essentially it's going to be the same distance out from the house, but extended the full length. And the existing stairs will, um. Uh, I believe be bumped out from what? Saying, yeah, they're currently in line with the edge, so. They'll be bumped out and the distance, I believe. Is, it's pretty comparable at the two closest points.
Where, where's the, where are the stairs in the?
This is the base of the stairs currently. And then on the proposed site plan, instead of the, the end of the stairs being here, it would be bumped out. I believe he said the stairs are going to be three feet wide, so it'd be three feet out. From where they are now.
Oh, okay. In the same direction?
Yes. Yeah, so I took this and I overlaid it. Come on. Overlaid it. Um, so everyone's seeing a sketch with colors?
Yeah.
Now.
So I took the dimensions and I put it on that. An as-built, so you can see the closest corner is about fifteen feet and the stairs I'm estimating will be about sixteen feet. Obviously, this is a sketch, um, but it is based off of an as-built of the house. Um, and the wetlands that were delineated. Um. And he's got that fence basically right on the wetland line. Thoughts, concerns?
This is Commissioner Amrod. Jamie, is there any? I don't see any detail. Uh, did you say it's going to be gravel underneath? It's going to remain.
Yeah, so let me go back to that photo. Um. It's, uh, can you, am I screen sharing now?
Not yet.
Okay, so you can see that there's existing stone.
Yeah.
So if you kind of look at. I think that he, he mentioned he might, um. Kind of square off this gravel. Kind of coming over to the gate.
Okay, alright, yeah, thank you.
I mean, this, it's kind of like a mossy backyard. I'm not sure. How much it would thrive once it's already shady and then once you throw a deck over it. Um, I think that's kind of what would drive. Any decision there. And he doesn't plan on doing like a walkway or anything from the bottom of the stairs, just the, the, the landing required for building code.
And the, and the pitch is not so bad, so. Anybody uncomfortable with the agent approval on this one?
Jamie, the only question I have, Commissioner Begmon. Um, just because it's winter and I'm thinking about people who are over salting things on the roads and so. Driving through it, but, uh. Peo- you know, people can put down all sorts of stuff on decks and given that it's so close to the wetland, would it make sense to?
I can ask to clarify that with the homeowner. Um, and or just make it a condition.
To what? Not use that stuff?
To not use like a deicer on the deck.
Well, if you, if you use a synthetic deck, you know, that, that could be an issue with anything that you put on a synthetic deck, so.
You mean for the integrity of the, the material?
Of the material, yeah.
Yeah, and I do know he's planning on using synthetic materials. Um. Okay, I wrote that down to make a note to make sure I address it properly.
Thank you.
Usually a conversation gets you further than a written con- condition.
Okay, so we agree in the, when inland, wetland twenty four twelve oh one would be agent approval. Anybody have a issue with that? Okay. I guess we jumped down to number eight. You. Put down an announcement for a, uh, land use.
We had that the last meeting, just, uh, just a reminder. We'll send out a final reminder closer to the meeting. I also wanted to identify that I got in heads up, the cause annual meeting will be March fifth. Um, they don't have registrations set up yet, but we'll send something out once they have something. But in case you're interested in attending the cause meeting. Um, if you want to pencil in, March fifth is the date. And it will be at the Aqua Turf Club in Southington, Connecticut.
Usually a good one. Any other business? If we get a hurried up motion to adjourn, we can do this before eleven.
Mr. Begmon, motion to adjourn. Mr. Papentone.
Thank you all.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.